Park and Recreation Commission meetings. And staff, I'd like to point out that Brian Beck and Ivan DeCar did a tremendous amount of work to get this thing going. And also like to thank our consultant as well. So tonight you're going to see a draft version of all the work that's happened. It's been almost a two-year process. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Michael from Prose Consulting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity, Mayor Council, to be here in front of you this evening to make this presentation. It is a PowerPoint presentation, so it is, at the end of the day, kind of an executive summary of a hundred-plus-page document. So. All right, sounds good. So, uh, let's see. I have the ability to. That's okay. Okay. Okay, great. So, um, I will not, I will not read verbatim for you the things that are on the screen. But we're going to cover basically the major components of the master plan this evening. And, you know, Mayor, Vice Mayor Council, if you would like to engage along the way, Q and A along the way, as opposed to waiting to the end, I'm totally okay with that, simply because obviously there is a lot of information associated with this. So, um, you know, I think it's important to kind of put into context, uh, you know, City Manager Mondell, uh, basically, indicated that this is kind of a guiding document for you. So I want to make sure you kind of understand what this master plan really is. It's a 10- to 15-year planning horizon. Uh, it is, community need is very foundational. At the end of the day, Parks and Recreation Community Services are best when they get utilized by your community. So understanding your community needs is really, really important. This is a prioritized yet very flexible guiding document. So whether it's around park and trail service level provision, program and service program plan, and even the cost estimates for park facility, uh, trail development. Uh, understand that this is kind of a guiding document. It is not a binding document. You are not, um, in many cases, uh, what you're not doing is, is this is not in stone. It is not also intended to replace your capital improvement project or budget process as part of your annual budget process. What this does is it tees up our recommendations as it relates to cost, as it relates to capital improvements, and it provides cost estimating for the department and, you know, city administration to utilize, to incorporate into the budget process. It is not intended, uh, if you, if and when you adopt this plan, it's not intended for you to be adopting the capital improvement plan for community services going forward. So, um, you know, just a little bit about your community. Again, this is pretty foundational. Uh, you're approximately at about 70,000 people, uh, and you're going to grow to about 80,000 people. This information comes from the Environmental Systems Research Institute. They are the global leader in demographic and market data. And the reason that we like to use them is because they update their information annually. And so, um, it's also important to recognize that you have a number, a significant number of households in your community. What this tells us when we look at your average household size is that you're much larger household size-wise than the US as a whole. This kind of starts to give us an indication that you're a very family-oriented community, and that you likely have large, um, you know, segments of your community, uh, that are kids. So, uh, reiterating that, when we look at your population by age segmentation, uh, it's important to recognize that only 20% of your population is 55 and older. Whereas the US, um, as a whole, 55 and older is closer to 30%. So again, you are a younger community. This does not mean that you're not going to provide services to any specific age group, but it actually shows that you're going to be very family-oriented and that you do have a very balanced, uh, community in terms of kids, in terms of, you know, young adults, in terms of, you know, folks that are middle-aged and folks that are on the older end of the spectrum. The projection also kind of indicates that you're going to remain that way. Uh, you are not in a position where, um, you're going to be, uh, you know, aging significantly in place over time. Uh, another key component, uh, is your race and ethnicity numbers. Why is this important for us to understand? It's important because there's a lot of cultural influence when it comes to recreation preferences and experiences. And so recognizing that your community is only 40% white alone, and recognizing that that is going to continue to drop to 24% um, in the next 15 years, and that you're some other race and two or more races will actually be larger than the white alone population is significant. One thing that you don't see on this screen is the Hispanic population. The reason being is that the Hispanic population is a subset or ethnicity of all of the different race segments. So it is basically broken out separately. Your Hispanic population is 64% and is going to grow to about 68% in the next 15 years. Basically, you can be, you can be of Hispanic or Latino origin and be white alone, black alone, uh, you know, some other race. And so I think it's important to recognize again that this is another ethnicity that brings to the table some really strong cultural preferences. In fact, a very, a national study just recently completed before COVID, um, indicated that the number one ethnic racial segmentation that uses parks in the country as a whole is the Hispanic population. And so I, that's a big takeaway, um, for your community to recognize that your park utilization is typically going to be higher in your community simply because of your demographics. So park assessments were also completed. Um, there was a number of different, uh, I guess you would call evaluation criteria from access and connectivity to condition to functionality, as well as experience and safety. There is all detail on each and every park and each and every, uh, criteria was rated, um, in the master plan document. And this is everything that was assessed. Um, and here's your kind of overall scores. Uh, the, as would be expected, Delago Community Park, your Newark Park, um, is certainly, uh, scores the best. Uh, in terms of the Santa Fe Trail, we have to recognize that, uh, it is at the bottom, but it was also at the bottom in these, this evaluation was done about a year ago. So improvements have been made, but continued improvements will need to be made on that signature linear park, um, trail system that you have as part of your community. So again, uh, you know, we typically would look at this and say, you know, you do have opportunities for improvement. Many of these scores, uh, are simply a matter of recognizing that your park system needs to be reinvested in. And what I kind of mean by that is, is anything you build, none of it lasts forever. At some point, you're going to have to life cycle replace. And so a number of your parks, um, uh, will be in need of life cycle replacement going forward. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we, uh, speak to the capital improvements. From a community engagement perspective, we held a number of focus group and stakeholder meetings, staff and community, park, uh, community services, advisory board. Um, and these were kind of some of the key themes that came out of this. And you'll see that these resonate as we get into the statistically valid survey. But economic development through park reinvestment, uh, is, is an opportunity. Uh, investing or reinvesting in the existing park system. Uh, trails and connectivity is extremely important to your community. Uh, a need to increase advocacy and awareness of what Parks and Recreation and Community Service offers to your community, and, um, consistently having funding strategies and streams to help to keep the park and recreation system, uh, at a, at a, at a point i- in terms of condition and maintenance and programs and services that meet your community's expectations. Another key, uh, driver, uh, of these community engagement was the statistically valid survey. So if anybody really loves numbers, um, this is where I'm going to hit you up with these. We conducted this, uh, last summer, uh, and it was, uh, conducted in both English and Spanish. Eight percent of, uh, adults in Tulare speak Spanish only. Of the surveys that were returned, 18% of them were completed in Spanish. So we feel like we, we definitely, uh, did our, our job in terms of being able to reach, uh, your population. Uh, another key significant driver is that we, our goal of these were to have 300 completed household surveys, and we had 317. Statistically valid surveys, in order for them to be statistically valid, have to be demographically and geographically balanced. So all of the demographic information that I shared with you, we have to ensure that we have surveys that match up to those demographics. We also need to ensure that this, where the surveys were returned from is where people live and where you have the greatest amount of density, where you have the least amount of density is where we would expect to have the, the, um, the fewer number of surveys returned. So I've broken this up into a number of different segments here. So advocacy is the first thing. And this kind of helps to reiterate what we heard from this, uh, focus group and stakeholder meetings, that additional advocacy and awareness of what, how the value of community services in Tulare is really, really important. So everything that's in the blue are the statements that kind of indicate that people strongly agree or agree with these benefits. The red line, the vertical line down the middle is the 50%. Uh, so you can see pretty much, uh, every one of these statements, um, need to, uh, that you need some work in order to create some advocacy and awareness regarding the benefits of community services. The ratings for the library services are a little bit higher. And I think this is part and parcel because everybody understands what a library is, everybody has used a library, uh, and there are some very significant institutional and historical value systems in most communities across this country as it relates to libraries. So you can see that, uh, the library scores in terms of people being satisfied or very satisfied are much higher than the advocacy statements that we see for community services as a whole. So community support, um, this starts to give us an understanding of what people are willing to support in terms of improvements to existing facilities. So improving restroom facilities was by far number one. General repair and increase of maintenance, the reinvestment in your existing system. Improving trails, improving athletic fields, uh, adding playgrounds, adding, uh, loop trails to your system. So again, I think it takes you to get all the way down to, um, add Wi-Fi and other technology improvements to existing parks for people to fall less than 50%, either very supportive or supportive, which eat each one of these actions. So you can see that there's a lot of dark blue and a lot of light blue on this screen. When we ask the same kind of question, but about developing new facilities, uh, you see also a lot of dark blue and a, oh, yes, yes.
Go back to the previous.
Absolutely.
Can you identify what that last item? Expand archery range?
Yes.
Is that part of the park?
No, it's not. Okay. It's not part of your park system, but it exists.
Yeah, we currently don't have an archery range.
Okay. We'll have to.
I was just curious how it got up. Okay.
We'll have to ask that. We'll have to look at that one again. But thank you for pointing that out. In terms of new facilities, um, developing, uh, new parks, uh, developing new sports facilities, uh, developing a new area for community events are all very, very supportive. Um, the only thing that, uh, is not a, Pete, folks are not really supportive of related to new facilities is, uh, developing a new skate park or bike park. Um, you have one, uh, likely needs to be reinvested in. In terms of highest priority needs in your community, so we asked, uh, you know, three different sets of questions. One was around active aging. So you have a senior center and we wanted to understand how best to activate it through programs and services. Um, you can see that there's a lot of high priority and a lot of medium priority programs and services as it relates to active aging in your community. There's only one that falls on the low priority. This helps to provide a roadmap for community services in terms of how to activate even more the senior center that you have, the types of programs and services that folks are most interested in. The other thing that is really important to recognize is they're not all grouped into what I would kind of call one or two core program areas. They, they move between trips, um, things that are, uh, for support groups, things that are club-based, uh, things that are technology-driven, um, things that are related to, um, improving health and wellness. So it's not as if everybody just wants trips or everybody just wants arts and crafts, or everybody just wants to play cards. It's a lot of different, um, circumstances and, uh, related to this that, that folks are most interested in. In terms of general recreation programming, this is where you start to see that there is a little less importance, uh, related to, um, all of the types of programs, especially when you compare to active aging. So fitness and wellness programs, free, low-cost community events, which helps underscore the, the amphitheater project that you all are, uh, looking for. Cooking classes, uh, believe it or not, since COVID, that seems to have become a real high priority in most communities across this country, including yours, and arts and dance. Um, one thing I do want to point out is that most of the time in most communities, sports leagues, um, fall to a lower priority because they're very age-specific, skill-specific, uh, most it's kids-related. Uh, and of course, as we know, athletics is very skill-based. Your sports leagues in your communities fall into a medium priority, which helps to underscore the importance of athletics in your community. In terms of special events that people are most interested in, um, we wanted to ask this question just simply because you're moving forward with, potentially with an amphitheater project. Uh, and we typically know that special events, uh, become very, very important to your community. Um, food and beverage, um, was number one. Now I recognize that special events typically have food and beverage, but food and beverage special events are meant to be that where the food and beverage is center of the, the actual special event. It's not a support offering like a food truck at a movie night. Uh, so food and beverage events would be number one. Entertainment, this could be concerts in the park, movies in the park, uh, could be dance, uh, recitals in a park, uh, could be Battle of the Bands, um, those kind of come in number two, and then cultural celebrations, festivals fall in at number three. So if you move forward with the amphitheater project, you have some really good information from your community about the type of special events that folks are, uh, potentially looking for as part of that, that, uh, location. Um, in terms of, um, recreation programs and services by household type, we wanted to take a look and understand that, you know, one size does not fit all. We talked about your demographics and we talked about the fact that you have a really young, family-oriented community. So what we wanted to do is understand how the high priorities programs and services across the community, how they compare against each one of your different age segments. Or shall we say life modes? So people that have young kids are in a very different life mode than folks that don't have kids at all at home. And so you start to realize that there is a lot of consistency across the top four that are citywide. But you also start to see that households with young children ages zero to nine have far more higher priority programs desired. Learn to swim, sports leagues and so on and so forth. It becomes very different when we talk about teens and young adults. These, you know, the different high priorities become more significant as it relates to volunteer programs, education classes, golf programs and so on and so forth. And then, of course, as you know, you you start to talk about people that don't have kids, the high priorities seem to fall in line more with just the city as a whole. So that is important because it helps to frame out the type of programs and services by age specific or life mode target in your community. In terms of facilities and amenities, you start to see that there are a lot more higher priority and medium priority facilities and amenities and fewer low priority. So dog parks, which this was done prior to your dog park taking root. So you were out in front of understanding and recognizing the need for a dog park. But then you start to see trails, you start to see walking tracks, you start to see urban trails. You know, for biking and and walking. So you start to see that, you know, the community as a whole relates to trails and it's very, very significant. But then you also have a number of medium priorities in your community as a whole. Again, this is where we start to see athletic fields also be a medium priority. Whereas most of the time in communities, it's low.
Before we move on, can you go back to that slide?
Absolutely.
In terms of the definition of community gardens, what what?
What community garden?
Yeah, I see.
So a community garden is is a it it can be its own standalone plot of land, or it could be a plot within a an actual park. And what the city does is it actually creates small garden plots as part of half an acre or an acre of land. And then you rent those plots to to people in your community. And they basically go and garden. There are community garden standards that can be provided to you that provide some guidelines for this. But but really, it's you you till up a plot of land. You determine the level of which you're going to help prepare. You typically provide water and irrigation. And then you rent the plot on a season basis to to residents of your community to basically go garden in a in a public park.
So from my understanding, so obviously that was one of the top priorities.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes. It is. In terms of facilities and amenities, again, broken down by household type, you can see a lot of consistency across all of the different life modes as it relates to citywide. But then you also start to see a significant number of additional high priorities for kids or households with kids under the age of ten. And and that is just incredibly important to recognize as you go forward. Especially with the community that you have. So how do we use all of this information? Your demographics, your current conditions of your parks, your community needs. We start to create what's called a level of service provision. And there's a methodology to it. It is not linear. It takes into account a number of different variables. And we we typically try to use these as a way to provide guidance for you. One thing that is important that may not necessarily be listed here is your your current general plan. And our need to align the number of park acres per one thousand people that you have with your current general plan, which is currently four point zero acres per thousand of developed parkland. And so community need, what your current level of services, what your population growth looks like as it relates to financial sustainability, your opportunity to acquire and develop parkland. So there are a lot of different variables that we consider when we talk about level of service. What we don't create population based standards for are trails and natural area open space. Two reasons. Number one, natural area open space is really about resource location and a need and desire to acquire that land to preserve it as open space or natural area. Most communities, you know, in in York, in a suburban area like yours, a urban suburban area, don't have a ton of open space to acquire. And or your zoning ordinances don't necessarily lend itself to preserving open space. But it's really about opportunity. In terms of trail miles, this is no different than arterials, collector streets, secondary streets. You don't determine a predetermined number of miles of those types of streets based on your population. You try to create a connected network that in turn moves traffic. Trails are the exact same way. It's not about hitting some arbitrary number. It's about understanding how to create a connected network that people can walk, bike, stroll, jog, run on. And so we create current level of cert, we create a level of service. The first thing is to understand what your current level of service is. So we've separated out your park acres by what we call developed park acres. So pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, regional parks. There are four different classifications. They provide for very different experiences. Pocket parks are typically small, half an acre in size, don't have much recreational experience to them. Then you end up going up the food chain, so to speak, neighborhood parks, community parks, regional parks. You're currently at three point two nine acres per one thousand people as it relates to developed parks. You also have a linear park, which is Santa Fe Trail, and you have paved trails, which is about seven miles. We just wanted to make sure that we cop, you know, captured that as part of your inventory. But again, we're not going to create a population based level of service for these for those types of parks and or trail system. In terms of what you need, again, our recommendation is four acres per one thousand. This is in line with your general plan. So by adopting this kind of guiding policy document, it's not going to trigger a general plan amendment. You don't want to have documents that are in opposition of each other. So how we have chosen to split up the the getting you to the four acres per thousand and the additional eighty nine acres is to recognize the opportunity that you have in your system that doesn't necessarily mean acquisition. So we know that there is opportunities for two acres of pocket parks. We know that there are opportunities for seven acres of neighborhood parks, and there's also potential opportunity for eighty acres of a regional park. Why the regional park category and not the community park category? This is going to start to speak to your need for amenities in your park system. So again, same exercise as it relates to current level of service. But we also wanted to incorporate school inventory as well because we know that some of that inventory is available to the public on a limited basis. So we didn't want to put ourselves in a position where we weren't counting that inventory and we were making recommendations that overbuilt your system.
I had a question. So in regards to that analysis of determining the acreage, does that include our basins? So our basins double up as a water storage and a park? Does that include in these calculations?
We did not incorporate basin parks into this.
Those basin parts are not in here.
Correct. We incorporated all of the inventory that is was assessed. The basin park typology doesn't have a lot of recreational value to you. And so recognizing where it falls into what we call developed parks, which they really aren't. If we were to count them, if you if you wanted us to go back and add those in, we would add those in below the developed park acreage line.
Right, because I think what happens is when we have a development, the developer, I don't know if it gets away with it, but satisfies the need by calling that a park. And so I think that's one of the things that I know I've brought up in the past is how do we take advantage of making it a true park? I mean, there's some basins in some cities that are the basin itself, but they have, you know, a
Park acreage up above it, correct?
And you know, the water filters down through a cistern and that's a park. I mean, I don't consider these parks, like you said, because of lack of recreation. So I know sometimes we say, oh, hey, our developers building four hundred houses in a lot and they have a basin and quote, that's a park.
Yeah, and the separate effort that you guys are undertaking is kind of that that Quimby ordinance, that parkland dedication ordinance that starts to really define what you're willing, number one, what the targets are in terms of getting land from from a developer, but then also what in turn you actually will take and accept. Without having that kind of technical document in play, you're you're subject to, you know, basically, you know, not being able to enforce the type of park acreage that you want.
I'm so sorry to interrupt it. Since you brought the Quimby, so the Quimby Act, you've seen drafts of it. It will be coming back to you shortly. It's going to be going through the Rexon Park Commission and Planning Commission. I think it's being circulated with the BIA. So we're trying to get public feedback before it comes to you, but that's a companion document sort of sort of implementation tool to the park master plan. One of the other things that will follow at some point in the future, we haven't talked with council about this yet, is at some point we need to revisit our park fees, our fee structure and how we charge for, you know, improvement, so on and so forth, the impact fees. That all gets dovetailed with this as well. That's a future endeavor to come forward after this.
Thank you. And so, long story short, I think what we want to do is understand what your current level of service is. This ties back then to the type of amenities in your park system that folks desire and want. When we start to look forward, this starts to explain why we're looking at a regional park and not community parks. Regional parks are typically larger in size. You know, fifty plus acres. This, you recognize that when you start talking about baseball, softball, football, soccer, those are large acreage, they they take up a lot of acres. And when you need those kind of numbers, especially when you consider the type of demographics that you have in your community, where sports leagues are and where athletics are, it starts to scream that you need a lot of acreage. And having it in all one location is also really important because it makes maintenance exceptionally efficient. It becomes a go to park for your community for, in many cases, sports and athletics. And this helps to give you a driver of what some of those, why you would want kind of that eighty acre regional park as opposed to, you know, a couple, three, four, twenty, twenty five acre community perks.
Real quick on that question, in your experience with other master plans in cities, one of the things that this council has really prioritized is economic development. You know, and I think you mentioned, and I saw somewhere about this being an economic economic development opportunity. But in, could it work to have, like, for example, you know, if we do an eighty acres, you know, that's, you said a regional park, but if we're able to do softball fields in one part of the city, football, soccer fields in another part of the city, would that economic driver kind of be sort of spread out? Because, you know, I think what happens is that particular parts of the city get everything. And so the idea is can we spread that? And I I went to the commission, last commission meeting and asked them to consider that recommendation of spreading spreading these amenities throughout the city so that economic development could drive everywhere.
Correct.
And and so that was one thing in your experience. I understand the maintenance part of it, but does economic development work better when you split things about?
Most of the time, when folks are looking for a a park that is going to be tied to economic development, it is not broken up over two, three different parks. It is typically a regional sports complex or a regional aquatic facility or something that is really going to allow you the opportunity to drive a lot of people to one location and generate revenue off of it. If you start to think about economic development, you you have to do kind of what we call an economic impact study associated with any sort of type of sports complex or aquatic park because you have to ensure that number one, you have a market for it. And number two, you just don't make the general assumption that a lot of people make that we build it and all of a sudden we're going to put a bunch of heads in beds and, you know, people in seats at restaurants. You have to ensure that your market is large enough that you're going to get people to drive here for, you know, a couple of hours and feel like they need to stay overnight in order to to do that. And and a lot of folks overestimate the number of out of town visitors when it comes to sports tournaments. The long story short of it is, is most of the time, seventy five, eighty percent of the time, when people are looking to do economic development through park development, it's typically around aquatics, it's around a sports complex and they are singular sites. That otherwise, you you basically would put yourself in a position of saying, you know what, let's just do community parks and do exactly what you're kind of currently doing right now and spread the wealth through different geographical areas. Part of the reason why we identified the eighty acres, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there is potentially an opportunity for you to acquire eighty acres of property in one location that would not necessarily put you in a position where you have to do significant capital outlay for land acquisition. Okay. So again, a number of facility amenity needs that kind of scream, we need a large kind of park in order to put these kind of amenities in them. The other thing that we wanted to look at was indoor facilities. You're a little short in terms of the number of square footage for indoor facilities. Not every program works well in a park or an outdoor setting. There are definitely opportunities. So we looked at teen center, we looked at senior center, community center. Where we kind of see you being relatively short is on the community center side of the equation. Think about all those needs associated with the life mode of families with kids under the age of ten. They don't fit the teen center. They don't fit the senior center. This is where the kind of community center comes into play. Your total amount of of square footage, if you were to hit the recommendation, is about point eight five square feet per person in your community. It's not significant, but it would require a a need for you to identify, construct about thirty to thirty one thousand additional square feet. Currently doing a a project in Calabasas, California, where they have a forty thousand square foot facility that in essence, got moth mothballed because of COVID, as well as some other infrastructure issues. They're trying to bring that back online. They've started to realize that not having that facility of that size for your their community has become really detrimental because they can't serve families. They have special interest facilities like swim and tennis centers. They just don't have that general community center to allow the opportunity for out of school programming, basketball, a whole bunch of different potential indoor activities. So this is a a recommendation. Again, maybe not necessarily a a short term recommendation, but definitely something for you to consider over the next fifteen years. So here's where we get to the cost estimating. We have three buckets. And the the reason that we have three buckets is there's typically different funding strategies that would be able to help this. But it also helps you to prioritize investment in your existing park system or reinvestment as well as new improvements. So the first bucket is really just that critical life cycle replacement. A playground for a playground, a ramada or picnic shelter for ramada or picnic shelter. Continuing to to pave and repave trails. Expanded services could be things such as adding athletic field lighting to existing facilities that that we likely need to incorporate into this CIP. Visionary is building new, building that regional park, building a thirty one thousand square foot community center. And so this is kind of how it breaks out. Now, don't be sticker shocked with the number. Again, this is looking out, you know, over the next fifteen years. But you have about fourteen million dollars over the next ten to fifteen years of life cycle replacement. You have one point seven million of opportunities to improve your existing park system by adding elements that don't currently exist. You have visionary park and recreation projects, which I'll speak to in a second in terms of what really makes up a lot of those. But then you also have about seventeen million dollars in trail projects. But then you also have about seventeen million dollars in trail projects. That tie back to your existing trails plan. So the grand total is about a hundred and twenty-one million. What makes up this? So that fifty acre, uh, or that eighty acre regional sports complex, about fifty million dollars. Or forty-one percent of that grand total. Um, that first step is to develop a concept plan. With a landscape architect at a location. Um, the next one, uh, that makes up that about twenty-five million is a thirty thousand square foot community center. It makes up about twenty-one percent. Your first step is a feasibility study. What would that look like? What would it cost you really to build? What would it cost you to operate? How would you program it? Um, new trail development is about seventeen million or fourteen percent. Uh, and life cycle replacement, uh, is fourteen million or twelve percent. So this is really what makes up that big one hundred and twenty-one million dollars. If you took out the eighty, and I'm not saying, suggesting that you did, but two of these projects are. About seventy-five million dollars of that hundred and twenty-one million. So i- it's almost. You know, you're, you're left with about forty-five thousand dol- forty-five million dollars worth of improvements. Uh, if you took those two projects off. Um, but these are obviously big, big projects and are visionary in nature. But also tie back to the level of service recommendations. So capital improvement, funding strategies, um, grants, grants, grants. Uh, the current, uh, state, uh, granting program is on hold. Um, the one that kind of got rolled out in the, the late, uh, you know, twenty teens. Uh, and, uh, really, uh, took a dive as part of COVID. Um, but these are going to be a couple of significant granting, uh, or funding strategies. Your own general fund, funding, capital improvement pla- plan, the impact fees, uh, that the city manager talked about, general obligation bond. And of course partnerships. In terms of strategic implementation, it's really level of service provision, constructing trails. Uh, improving and continually improving your parks, um, recreation programming. Uh, you saw all of the, uh, the high needs, especially for kids under the age of ten, operations and staffing. It's always important that if you expand your park system, you go to expand your programs and services. That you don't in particular stretch your maintenance budget so far, uh, that i- it's looking like stretching a rubber band, right? Um, you, you stretch it and stretch it and stretch it until it breaks. It doesn't have any more. Uh, if you add parkland, if you add facilities, you have to add to the operational budget. Um, otherwise you're just never going to have, you know, uh, parks that are consistently, uh, maintained. And, and not, how do I say this? I'll say this this way. There are parks that are newer that always look great. The parks that are older sometimes look neglected. Part of this is maintenance dollars, part of it is life cycle replacement. The point of equity of a park system is to ensure that the quality of experience is the same regardless of the park. Not necessarily the fact that there's amenities in a park, because not every park can have every amenity. But ensuring that you have quality, consistent maintenance, custodial, life cycle replacement. So you don't end up with new parks and neglected parks. Neglected parks get used for the wrong reasons. Um, and that just creates a cycle, especially with police. Uh, and then financing the park system. Sustainable funding strategies are important, regardless of whether you build anything new. You're always going to be on the hook to life cycle replace and reinvest in your existing park. So, um, your existing park system. So, um, you know, the next step is to make any final edits to this document as you, um, uh, direct us to. Uh, and then consideration of adoption of the, uh, the master plan on a future council agenda. I know it's a lot of information. I appreciate you staying with me. Uh, take any questions or additional questions or comments that you may have.
So at this point, are there any comments or questions from the council?
Sure. Um, I had a couple of comments. I appreciate all the hard work. Uh, I did get a chance to attend the, uh. Commission's meeting when this was brought up. I think the one thing that I really wanted to, um, that I shared with the commission that I was hoping would. Uh, re- make a recommendation to council was that, um, they also come up with the, uh, opportunity of what the next steps. Would be as you, as you laid out, but more importantly, what some of that cost would entail. I mean, I've been involved in local government for a long time and I've been part of. Many, many master plans and I've seen many, many master plans sit on a shelf, collect dust after all this hard work. And so for me, I definitely would like to see what the council could do to move this forward. I, I think I might have mentioned it to Jason, uh, briefly, but. Wh- what can we do financial wise to kind of keep this going? You know, I know this is about a year and a half, two-year process work that's finally, you know, before us. Um, so are there any thoughts? I mean, in terms of like, uh, when you talk about what are, what's some council feedback? That would be something I'd request that staff working with the consultant look at what's. What can we do next and what that would, what that would cost and what that timeline would be to keep this momentum going? I mean, definitely would love to be able to incorporate some of the ideas that folks, I know I'm working. On a community garden project in my council district. I'm glad to see that folks think it's a priority in our community and so I'm going to continue to move that forward. But, um, what would be the next steps that you guys would recommend for us to keep it going?
So, so in the, um, so in the, uh, to answer your question, so in the actual master plan, we have the focus areas here. In the actual master plan, there are, um, very specific strategies to help advance each one of these. The, the challenge is always prioritizing them, right? Um, and you know, parks and recreation in your community does not live in a vacuum. Uh, it competes with, um, all of the other general fund. Uh, funded, um, programs. And so it's, it's, it's a matter of prioritizing. The park and recreation improvements, but also at the same time prioritizing them. In, in association with police, fire, uh, and all of the other general fund funded services. I- if, if it were me, a- and I'm a recovering parks and recreation director, so I have, um, had the opportunity to sit on. Uh, the city's, uh, staff side of the table. The most critical thing for me is trying to identify a consistent year-over-year funding strategy. That tells your community that you're going to continue to reinvest in what they already have to experience. We do this with our homes. We do this with our vehicles. We do this with streets. Um, and having a, a dedicated or consistent funding source. That continues to take into account the reinvestment that's required. So that you just don't end up with parks that are unused because people view them as not safe. People view them as neglected. We all know the, the broken window theory, right? Break a window. What does that tell you? Tells you, tells you a lot. Same thing can be said about a park restroom or a playground. Um, in your community, the things that they said that were most important to them. Um, of taking care of, is taking care of what you already have. The other bigger projects, sorry, the other bigger projects, uh, amphitheater starts to help meet community need. Uh, athletic fields, really, really critical, could add lights to existing athletic fields. You could, um, start to identify there are opportunities to work with schools, uh, even more so than you, you do now. Um, but those are, those are all other things, but to me, it's really taking care of what you already have. And that aligns with what your community has said. Sorry.
And, and, and counsel, if I might add, we have no intention of allowing the plan to sit on the shelf. Um, I think what you've seen over the last two years is. We actually implement things even before the plan is completed because we have not only good intuition, but as we're doing the plan and we see the information coming back. We move forward and bring things to you to implement. So for example, uh, the, um. Quimby Act ordinance, that is the next step you're going to see. That's a critical piece because it's very difficult for us to require developers to provide park acreage without a Quimby ordinance. And so that's why you see that ordinance coming back. I mentioned a few minutes ago about will we, we will be looking at the fee structure. I don't have the exact timing on that, but we will be, that's in the near future, in the next year or so. We'll be bringing back a proposal to hire consultants to look at our fee structures or impact fees, so on and so forth. Um, you know that we are bringing forward the bids for Zomwalt Park. That's the amphitheater project. You also are aware that we are in discussions and trying to develop a regional sportsplex project. Strategy that we would bring back to you and, and the consultant mentioned one of the, once we bring back sort of the bones of that and see if it, if it. Has some legs, then the next step of that project would be to hire a consultant to actually start laying it out. And start doing some more detailed conceptual plans of how this would function. What would be included, not include? That's a public process. Many months. Uh, one of the other big projects is, uh, I'm sorry, the trails that we talked about, that's. Part and parcel with, when you do an impact fee ordinance, does it fund trails, for example, or does, does it fund other, you know, other amenities? So that's going to get addressed in that. Uh, the, the bigger project in my mind. That's going to take a little more time is the community center. If council adopts the plan and it wants to do. Uh, some form of large recreational element that's not a regional sportsplex and indoor, probably an indoor, a partial indoor, outdoor facility. That's going to take more time. Uh, that project, I'm really excited about and I'd love to see us bring you back something. In the next three years that starts to address, what does that look like? What does it feel like? Get the public involved in that? But the funding of that, unless council said that's its number one priority, that's what you want us to work on. I would say that's probably a. Realistically, a three to five year project to really get legs under it and get a funding strategy. Uh, and some sort of conceptual design that everyone can buy it off, buy off on, but we have no intention of letting it sit. We will move very quickly.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, I'm looking on page ninety-one of the report that talks about the sustainability of the parks that we have now. Which is what you just addressed is being probably our priority and our next step is to do that. So in terms of that estimated cost, uh, for those projects, at this point in time, is that, um, money that is allocated? Or that's, what, what, what's the stage of that? Because I know in my district, this is the main concern in my district as well. I have four parks in my district. On the west side and, um, because the many, several of those parks were, um. Quite affected by the homeless population.
Correct.
So there is some real concern about the quality of the parks. And so that's what people are asking me about. When are we going to be able to use that park again efficiently? And I was thinking particularly of a Centennial Park, which I see is, is there in the, you know, the top priorities.
Correct.
And then if the survey was three hundred and seventeen people, is that the total number of people that responded out of the seventy thousand? Was that survey was sent out to everybody? I did the survey, so I, I know I did it. Uh, that's.
No, it's a, so it's a, um, a random sampling of your community. Um, and so it's. I hate to say it's like polling, but, but it's a statistically valid survey and the only way that it can be statistically valid. Is if it matches your demographics, um, and it matches that you get all walks of life. You don't just get users of your system. Um, a- and I, people have asked me this a thousand times. I can give you the three-page methodology. Um, that ETC Institute uses, uh, they, all they do is statistically valid surveys throughout the country. Um, and it will be great sleeping aid material for you. Um, but the best analogy that I can give you. Is that if you, uh, went to a community of like Louisville, Kentucky, has a million people. And you said, you asked them, I want to know whether or not your community likes chocolate ice cream or vanilla ice cream. And you made sure that you had a random sampling that matched the demographics, matched your geographic distribution. You would need responses from three hundred and seventy-five, okay, households. That's the easiest way I can try to explain it without going through all of the math and algorithms. Um, but they have a very tight process. We have worked with them for twenty-five years. They do this work all over the country and they primarily focus on parks and recreation and transportation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Madam Mayor, if I would, if I could, uh, some of the questions, like your question about the restoration of Centennial. Some of those projects won't necessarily come from the master plan, but they will come from the IRF round one grant to try to go back and replace some of those facilities. So there's a diff- there's a hodgepodge of where things might come from to achieve council's goals.
Are there any other comments or questions?
A question on, in regards to like, like Live Oak, uh, Caesar Chavez and Cypress. Those are also holding bases.
Correct.
And they are considered part of this or not part of that?
They, they are, um, and I do not remember off the top of my head, but one of the things that I can specifically remember. We did a park by park workshop, so we took all of this information, right? And we said, all right. We're going to go park by park and say, what are the actions that, that we are going to take to improve each park? And so the master plan contains this information in the actual cost estimating plan. But there were a number of parks that we said, you know what? It, it's an unproductive park. It's an old park that needs significant capital reinvestment. Instead of just putting things in there that maybe appealed to people that lived in that community twenty-five, thirty, forty years ago. Let's do a new site-specific master plan. Let's get the community engaged and say, how, how do you want to use this park? Here are the constraints that we, we have. Here's what you've told us. What you told us now, is this applicable to this park? That's where you hire a landscape architect and you say, hey, you know what? We want to redo this park. We just don't want to put. Reinvest in it and, and still have it go unused because the type of experiences in the park. Don't match what people want in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-seven. So there are a number of, of parks that fall into the, the site-specific master plan category. Um, so we're not just making the mistake of putting good money, um, you're putting good money into a situation that doesn't necessarily improve the community's experiences. You're welcome.
Um, a, a few of the topics that you hit on, I mean, you, you spoke about indoor and outdoor, um, and you touched on that one. I see that reported and, and as the mayor had already referenced on page ninety-one, you talked about expanded services. But I, I, could you, is there something else in the report? I just see it in that table is, is expanded services touched on and, and other areas? Of, uh, of the report or is expanded services just limited to that table on ninety-one?
The expanded services are specific to improvements that you can make in an existing park. That that experience does not occur at this point. So one of the things I think we're a little short on is, and probably we need to add, and I'll give you a really good example, is. Adding athletic field lighting at locations that you can, that it's appropriate to do so. That would be an expanded service because you're, you're expanding the opportunity for those athletic fields to be used beyond what they're doing right now. In terms of like programs and services, within that progress, program and service chapter. Um, there is a number of different actions associated with individual programs and services. Whether it be recreation programs or active aging programs, and they are identified as either. Continue to continue to do what you're doing at the level you're doing it. Um, or consider, uh, adding a new program if it's a high priority. Or try to expand those programs if you have the spaces and places to do so.
So I, I see under sustainable project recommendations in six point two. Under Rotary Skate Park, sorry, under, uh, Prosperity Sports Park, it says stadium lights replacement. And, and I s- I see a point, six point three, it's expanded services recommendation. Is there a portion of this report that speaks to what you just said verbally about lighting?
I'm sorry.
You, you mentioned verbally about lighting. Is there a, a section?
Oh, I was just using that as an example, that if there is something that, where we would want to add athletic field lighting. And let's say we don't have that incorporated into the plan right now. And, and you tell me, you know what, we want to add athletic field lighting at Oak Bay Soccer Complex. Um, we would need, we would take that information incorporated into the plan.
I, I guess my interpretation with that is that I, I think. I'm just talking out loud, so I'm not saying I'm right, wrong or otherwise, just the way of phrasing it's. Is I think initially is this plan is looking for the plan to say that compared to council members. Cause I think council members could say that at any time about any location. So I'm wondering if this plan speaks toward, I'm not seeing that, or if this plan speaks towards those recommendations. And if I'm understanding, it doesn't, it, on that subject matter, it does not. But if that's a concern of council, council could. Ask that to be put in.
Correct. In, in all likelihood, if that is something that you're asking us to do, I will be. I'll fall on the sword and say that's something that we should incorporate into the plan that is not currently in the draft version. Correct.
Okay. Um, the.
Council mentioned, issue it.
Council men- issue would.
Yeah, who's yelling at me? Yeah, Jason.
So there are um opportunities to add lighting in Elk Bayou Soccer Complex Field Five. And Prosperity Sports Park, one of the softball fields. In addition to that, if council. In the future, wanted to go the direction of building a regional sports park. Every field on that sports park, I would imagine, would have lighting. Um. With our existing park system, there is just not many opportunities to add lighting. To um existing parks. Um, what lighting does, as you know, um, it it. You can play more games per hour. And it, and you could, more games per hour, more practice times per hour. Um, we can do that at two existing parks, um, but to really make an impact. We would have to uh really take a look at a regional sports park and add lighting. To those fields if council wanted to go that direction in the future.
And and I would just add them.
I just want to clarify. It the 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 part that's grabbing me with that is my understanding, this isn't really about council. This is really about what this master planet and surveys would tell us. So what I'm understanding is that topic was not. Either brought up or that topic was not presented in this report, because. Because council, I mean, I say verbally, and I think it was brought up because it's been mentioned as a topic various times. But I think it was looking for the survey, the master plan to present that. And so what I'm understanding is the survey and the master plan did not present that. Not that that's bad, right, wrong, or others, it's because it didn't come up in this report, or it didn't come up. Because there wasn't, wasn't omitted because that's not feasible, that determination was already made. So what I'm. What I'm trying to split between the dichotomy is was we were looking for a survey. And a master plan that would give that information to council, and I think much like to Sagala's point of community gardens being listed. Is the element about um expanded elements. Or expanded adoptions of what would meet a community need, lighting is not listed in here. Now, if council wants to add it, we could add it, but that that's the point I'm I'm kind of looking at.
Yeah, I I I would say that um. In not to necessarily be just consistent with, um, you know. Jason, but I would say that the opportunities to expand significant services. Through athletic field lighting don't significantly exist in your system. If you're going to make a dent to add athletic fields. Add actual hours of utilization to your community. It i- in your community, it's building new athletic fields. It's not necessarily lighting one or two additional fields. Um, could it and should it be done? Uh, we can absolutely incorporate that and should incorporate that. Because your community did state that one of the recommended actions that they would improve is improving athletic fields.
So my my last po- kind of comment or information on is. One of the things which I also don't see is is the split between night and day or like before five P M or after five P M. So I I don't see that in the survey, so it it leads me in in reading, I mean, I haven't read the whole thing, but going through and reading is. Does it also allow itself the synopsis that the assumption is that this is daytime? That the activities, when I think of soccer, that I think of our sports complex, and even as I hear the presentation. It dominates the assumption that it's daytime activity. Now, building a new sports complex. And hours of operation again goes through like eight to five components, so. Indoor facility, I think chain doesn't allow necessarily the assumption that it's that it's day or night, it's indoor, outdoor, but. Was the surveys or was the input of this have any split between activities or all life mode activities? A difference between. Daylight, nighttime, work hours out of traditional work hours.
So I would go so far as to say that I I have done a number of athletic field-only master plans. And when you do athletic field-only master plans, you really start to dive into utilization. And what I mean by utilization is not just. The number of hours in which a field is used over a course of a year, but you start to understand. The the pinch points and the pressure points of when they're being used and how do you alleviate that? So evenings. Five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock are typically prime time. Especially spring and fall, maybe less so during the summer. But again. Part of this comes into, are we talking about recreational use? Are we talking about? Club use? Are we talking about competitive use? There there are so much. Um, that goes into a separate athletic field master plan in terms of analysis that is not in this master plan. Um, because we did a system-wide master plan that starts to get at. Park acreage type of amenities, community need. But if you really wanted to dive into um the athletic field. Um, side of the equation and really start to understand. Um. Where the need is for those additional athletic fields. Um, is it daytime? Is it nighttime? Is it evening? Is it weekend? Is it Monday? Is it Friday? Is it rec sports? Is it club sports? You would, you would want to do an athletic field master plan, and I'll give you a really good example. So one of the things that. A lot of communities make the mistake of is saying that. All of a sudden, if we light athletic fields, to your point. That we are going to add a ton of additional hours and we're going to take up some of that demand. And now we won't necessarily need to build one, two, three more fields.
Well, that that wasn't my point.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that that is what, this is an example of why you do an athletic field master plan. The caveat to athletic field master plans and athletic field utilization is there is usually a cap. On the number of hours in which a field can be used annually. In order to manage and maintain it to a specific quality, so it doesn't become dirt. So what a lot of people assume is that we light a field, well, now we're going to add three hundred or four hundred hours. Unless we know how many hours it's currently being used and what the adding of athletic field lighting does to the equation. You you can't make that general assumption without make potentially making a mistake somewhere down the line.
Uh, I, and I appreciate it and I appreciate you touching on that. I. I I can only speak for myself is is I think to to staff was, as I'm kind of understanding. Is this is a system-wide master plan.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that. So it's a system-wide master plan that, for lack of a better way to say it. Shows us what other master plans we need to do.
In some cases, yes. There are always additional actions. Like a, like a. Site-specific park or uh a a feasibility study for a community center or concept plans, yes.
Okay, and. I I'm not trying to be facetious. Thank you is is, I think. Thank you for clarifying because I think it exhibits perhaps maybe in my tone, which I apologize is. I was expecting that element to come from this master plan, and that's not the objective of it.
Correct. It was not a part of our scope to dive, deep dive into it that way. Correct.
But if I could add, council member, something you may not be aware of, eh, so so. Yes, th- this master plan's higher level, right? What kind of facilities do we need to have over the next ten, fifteen years? What kind of programming do you want to see, right? It's at that high level. As you described, it didn't go down really deep into, tell us everything that's wrong with Prosperity Sportsplex, and what do we need to replace and fix? There's a little bit of that in here, and there's some generalities about things like you could look at. For example, Bender Park, replace the playground with shade, right? Or. Prosperity Sportsplex Stadium Lights Replacement, right? So there is some of that level of specificity, specificity in some cases. But I do think we may need to think about updating this a little bit because what council has heard and I have heard and other key staff has heard from the citizens. Uh, over the last couple of years is we do need some upgraded lighting and some of our sports fields. And so we've, last council meeting, council approved a contract with an energy company to replace a bunch of sports field lighting with. L E D lights, which we will be able to do out of energy savings, right? So we're going to improve those fields. Improve the lighting and be able to do it out of dollars saved, okay? So. I do think you and Jason should have a conversation about that, and we might want to capture that somewhere in here, leave for council to consider when we bring it back because. That is an example, even though it didn't come out of this survey related to this effort. It has come from the citizens through other efforts, and it is an actual step councils taking to try to implement improvements in our parks.
Correct. Uh, it speaks to, I think, some of what you said earlier, which is you did not wait for a master plan to come forth. In order for you to take action to improve upon the things that were already potentially in play. Um, as a result of your community's engagement.
Any other comments?
Yes, um, I don't have specific comments now. I, obviously, we haven't had the opportunity to read this. There may be other comments. Uh, at that time. Thank you for your presentation. You covered a lot in here. Uh, I I want to be able to take. What you presented and go to the draft Tulare Parks and Recreation Master Plan that you've prepared. When when this comes back, will it come back for adoption or will it come back for further discussion?
Uh, Mayor and council, we were discussing that. We've discussed that multiple times. The the thinking right now for next steps would be that. Obviously, your council was just given what a hundred and. Eighty, you know, over two hundred pages.
No, actually, I was lucky because Melissa gave it to me at three thirty, so I.
Oh, oh, so you've read it. Oh, good, yeah. So so there was, there was never an expectation that your council would be asked to. To accept or adopt anything this evening. The idea is that uh your council will take this back. And uh consume it, ask questions over the next month. And at the July meeting, uh, we would hopefully have an opportunity to just discuss it again. Uh, make sure that we've gotten all the questions, all the comments out of your council that you want us to uh to dive into. And uh then go back, do any additional analysis, and then in August, hopefully in August, we will come back requesting adoption of the.
That that answers my question. Thank you.
Said, one one last question. Um, in your experiences, uh, I know that cities and school districts. Develop these joint use agreements, right, to try to take advantage of the lack of open space or park space. To try to create some of that community park space. Are there any examples of that? Partnership being with a nonprofit? In regards to developing a joint use agreement with a nonprofit that may have a park behind them or some kind of facility behind them?
There are absolutely a ton of examples out there with private, public, public, nonprofit, even. A three-legged stool kind of partnership. Um, those are typically ones where. Um, you know, that the cities get into are many times in which you ground lease um a location to somebody. And they in turn, you you enter into an operational agreement for them to, you know, manage and maintain it. You could just completely ground lease it and make them responsible for all the tenant improvements and operations. Um, there are just all kinds of examples of that. I have been involved in several of those, uh, really around. Um, recreation facilities, um, less so around parks. Um, but there are parks, plenty of public parks out there that are privately operated, um, in particular athletic.
I meant, I meant the flip side where they were owned by a nonprofit, but yeah, at least.
That's that, that's just the use agreement. Um, that is one of those things where if it's kind of no different than schools, right? The schools own the property. If somebody else owns the property. You can try to enter into some sort of operational agreement. It's likely going to cost you in terms of. Rent, um, uh, to use, you know, things on an hourly basis, or it could extend to. We'll give you it free of charge, but you're going to provide us a. A certain amount of financial, um, you know, compensation to take care of maintenance to a certain extent. Yeah, there there are a lot of different ways that you can slice and dice that. Um, I would say that, you know, sure, if there are opportunities out there, I think it's all about. You know, maximizing the the tax dollar, um, to, you know, the public benefit.
That conclude the questions and comments from the council? Then, um, pardon me? At this time. So do we need to uh just approve uh to come back or? It says we can, you know, we have three choices here of what to do.
Isn't this just informational item? We don't take it, we don't take any action.
No action is necessary on this item. We'll be back.
Very much. Thank you very much for your very thorough report.
Very well.
Read.
Thank you much.
Thank you. So we will now adjourn the special meeting. And we'll take a five-minute recess and we'll start back at five after seven. Get this? We're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Tulare City Council. The pledge of allegiance will be given by Janice Avala and Erin Talbot, pastor of the First Church of God, will deliver our invocation.
Madam Mayor, before we finish the invocation, I have a few words to say, so we can go ahead and do that. And then with your permission, I'd like.
After the invocation.
Yes, please.
Well, good evening, everyone. First off, thank you so much for your willingness to serve our community. And I'd like to pray for you as we start this meeting. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day that you've granted us. And Lord, for your mercy that renews us each and every day. Be with everyone here and anyone who's watching online as well. We pray, Lord, for wisdom and discernment, strength as well, and the resolve to do good. Lord, may this meeting be a benefit to the many and may glorify you. I pray all this in Jesus' name and everyone said.
Amen.
Amen.
If everyone would remain standing. Two weeks ago today, Melvin Skip Barwick passed away. Skip was a friend of mine. Skip also served from two thousand ten through two thousand fourteen as a Tulare City Council member. And he ran at a time when there was controversy in this community. And many of us up here can appreciate that, but that's when you have to step up and Skip did that. This racetrack issue was something that many members in this community had to deal with. Skip, Skip always had the philosophy that you were, you disagreed on issues, but when the issues were done, that you still remained friends and you still remained professional about what it is you were dealing with. And he's going to be missed. One of the things Skip did was he had everybody put in their drawer little horses. We have four up here. One's missing, which is appropriate because the missing horse in my mind is Skip. The, I believe when he left council in two thousand fourteen, that was the time of redistricting. And he was one of, in the three in the same district. He took the little horse with him. And basically, whenever anyone went on and on about a particular issue, he would take the little horse and he'd put it up there. And in memory of Skip, I'd like everybody to put them up, except Mr. Harrow, who doesn't have to worry about this because he never deals in that capacity. I do, and some others may. But that was a signal by Skip, basically to get off your high horse and, and let the meeting move on. So in memory of Skip, we're going to have these little horses up here throughout this meeting. And if we could have a moment of silence at this point in honor and memory of my dear friend Skip Barwick. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll just give one little anecdote about Skip as well. When I ran for city council the first time in the fair parade, he's the one that drove me in one of his hot rod cars because he loved cars. And so the car, it was just this amazing old sports car and he drove me through the, through the fair parade. So that's just a fun memory I have of him as well. So we will move on and we have a presentation by Adventist Healthcare.
I'm sorry, but I think we're not going to do the presentation today. It's on the agenda, but at the last minute, we received word that they were unable to attend.
Yes, there was, I apologize, Mayor. I didn't mention that to you. There was a family emergency and she was unable to attend.
We'll look forward to that at another time. So we'll move on to public comments. And this is a time for the public to comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Tulare City Council that are not on the agenda. The council asks that comments are kept brief and positive. The council cannot legally discuss or take official action on request items that are introduced tonight. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing or general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, each speaker will be allowed three minutes with a maximum time of fifteen minutes per item unless otherwise extended by council. For those who wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine during public comments and/or public hearing and general business items. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty-second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, please mute device used for viewing this meeting. So you may begin your public comment by stating your name and providing your city of residence. Are there any people in the, I was going to say congregation, any people in council that want to give a public comment this evening? Maddie?
Hello, everyone. I would just like to say, all of you know, I've worked with the Sunset for about a year and a half. And for those of you that don't know, last week was my last week. So I'm just here today to say goodbye. And thank you for so much fun I've had the last year and a half, learning so much. And thank you for putting up with my interrogations of probably each and every one of you. So I won't be staying until eleven PM tonight as much as I would like to. But yeah, I just want to say thank you and I've enjoyed getting to know all of you. And who knows where my future will take me, but hopefully I can stay in touch with most all of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. We, we hope you will keep in touch with us. And I was always glad to take your phone calls because I knew that you had integrity. And you always reported the news in a very unbiased, honest way. And so that was, I didn't avoid you like I might have.
I appreciate that, of course. And thank you, Josh, for always getting mad at anybody who didn't get back to me and telling me to get back. So I really appreciate that. I enjoyed it so much. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Melissa, is there anyone online? Okay.
Hi, are you ready? Yeah, you ready for me to go ahead? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Sayer and members of council. It's Donette Silva Carter with the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, I am at the office and unable to join you in person today, but, but I'll be watching. Anyway, I just want to start off by also expressing the condolences of the chamber with regard to our members Skip Barwick and also our fellow Rotarian and someone who truly was the steward of our community. A very instrumental in bringing the boxing club expansion that has happened before and the ongoing expansion that we're looking at for the future. Anyway, thank you. That was very appropriate to remember his efforts on behalf of our community. We had a great event with our salute to Dairy and Dairy Princess coronation. And I appreciate the council helping us to honor the Dairy family as well as the Dairy princesses at that event. We want to remind everyone that we have what is being built as a mega mixer, nine chambers of commerce, one location, Eagle Mountain Casino in Porterville on that this Thursday from five to seven PM. So bring lots of cards and come on out and join us. It's going to be a great opportunity for our community to make some new relationships to build and sustain business. We want to note that tonight we graduate our youth ambassadors for business. We had sixteen youths in the program this past year, and we now have applications open for recruitment for our youth for the next program year as well as recruitment for leadership Tulare, which is currently going on. Our next meeting is on July the eleventh. We have a couple of celebrations that are coming up that are worth noting. Of course, everyone has heard about the new International Aggreg Center Exchange, interchange, excuse me, that is going to break ground on the twenty-sixth at nine AM. We're very excited for that. And the element of safety and future prosperity that that interchange will bring to our community, thanks to those assisting me in council chambers who were instrumental along with many others in making that happen. We do want to call your attention to the fact that we have a ribbon cutting on July eighth at a just help that is the brand new MRI equipment. I know everyone's been looking forward to that coming in place. The violence in the workplace workshop that we have, an active shooter workshop is happening August second at Galaxy Theater. And we appreciate the support of the Tulare Police Department and the Tulare Fire Department in partnering with the chamber and with Galaxy Theater and our sponsor Valley Strong Credit Union in order to help us to make sure our businesses are as prepared as possible should something like that be encountered in our community. We also want to note floor alert that is out for a bill, F B five two five, which would put a tremendous financial strain on healthcare facilities, especially those with limited resources. It would increase healthcare costs at a projected eight billion dollars every year. And your Chamber of Commerce is advocating against that bill in order to make sure that our businesses cannot have to encounter such a heavy toll with what is that with regard to implementation of that bill. I would love to chat with anybody who would like information on that. Please give us a call or go to the California State Legislature site and look at F five twenty-five and look at the impact that you would see happening on businesses of all types, not just healthcare. That's where this crazy legislation is going to impact even more so than anticipated because it really will involve any worker who sets foot on the premises of any type of healthcare facility, whether or not they are a healthcare company. So we want to just put that out there in front of everyone. It's a significant minimum wage increase that will be prohibitive to business activity. Anyway, that's what we have for now. In addition to a reminder again, that we look forward to host the State of the City event, which is happening on August the twenty-fifth at the International Aggreg Center. That is eleven thirty to one thirty PM. And you can get tickets online at TulareCheaper.org. Thank you very much and have a great rest of the meeting. I will be joining virtually.
Thank you so much, Donette. Are there any other calls, Melissa? No. No one else in chambers? Then we'll close public comment. Go on to communications. Do you have any communications?
No communications.
Then we'll go to council reports and items of interest. Councilman Harrell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the seventh, attended the Four Creeks ribbon cutting. On the fourteenth, the Downtown Association on the seventeenth, Juneteenth celebration at Delago. And last night I was at the Republican Women's Meeting for about an hour and then I had to leave and meet with some constituents in Zumwalt Park regarding the amphitheater.
Thank you.
I attended a few meetings myself the last two weeks, but I didn't make a list, so I will, I'll pass with that.
Thank you.
I have one, apologize. The city manager and staff, I think in our email, it was noted that the city was awarded the IRF two application.
Correct.
And so I was just wondering, maybe we can expand on that because that's, that was a competitive grant funding application and maybe share some details about that.
Sure. I think the best person to do so would be Mario.
Still getting you seasonings, Mikes. Good evening, council. So the, yes, the city was awarded the ERF round two award of over four million dollars, just under five. Four point eight, just over and just under five. So four point eight million dollars to essentially scale up what has been accomplished already under ERF round one in terms of services being provided to the homeless population. There's also a component to further enhance that, work on accelerating exits out of homelessness into housing and a component that is included for the permanent shelter, which is the modular village component, the kind of transitional housing.
And if I could just add a couple of other comments and you'll correct me, Mario, if I'm wrong. Well, one is, you know, great kudos to Mario and his staff, Alexis and Gladys. That's competitive work and those are, that's a lot of work to put those applications together. You know, you recall that when we council moved forward with the temporary encampment, we had a little bit of a. You know, you recall that when we council moved forward with the temporary encampment, we had a little bit of a situation of a little bit of haves and have nots. We had about half the group that was in Earth one and the other half that was not, and that meant that the everyone received basic services. You had a tent and you had bathrooms and, you know, shower facilities, but you didn't have the caseworkers if you weren't part of Earth one, and the caseworkers are critical because they get to know each of the individuals and they find out in each case what services are available to them, signing up for veteran benefits and so on and so forth. But ultimately, hopefully putting them in a situation where they can find long term employment and housing. And I don't know if this number is correct, but I think the last I heard from Alexis from September to now, I think there were twenty individuals. Is that?
That's correct.
Twenty individuals who who have been taken out of homelessness and put into permanent supportive housing through Earth round one. The second point I wanted to make is, I don't remember the exact number, Josh or Mario will have to correct me, but I think it's one point four million of the total will be allocated towards homeless shelter construction, which makes it, again, much easier for us not to have to use our local reserve dollars, but rather the dollars of all the state taxpayers. So.
And I think to your council also deserves, well, first of all, credit definitely to Alexis and Gladys, our housing and grants staff who worked tremendously hard to put this very competitive, especially in round two application together. And it's a recognition by the state, and they've mentioned it on a few of the calls that they recognize a lot of what Tulare is doing, even as a smaller community to really work on this issue. But I think your council also deserves credit for coming together and having a strategic vision, which you're seeing in this round two, really funding everything from the street outreach, which starts with the clinical social workers and the case managers and helping the folks who are currently unhoused to the transitional phase, which is part of the shelter, and then getting the folks ultimately into permanent in permanent shelters. So it's this kind of trajectory and spectrum to assist folks as they transition out of homelessness to to a more stable situation. So very proud of the work of the staff and your council's support as well as management's to go after that grant.
Yes, thank you. That's really exciting news. So I was also able to attend on the seventh, the Four Creeks Open House and Ribbon Cutting, and I was really excited because I found out one of the owners I taught in kindergarten, so I'm going to leverage that all I can. Also, on the twelfth, I attended the Government Affairs Committee meeting. On the sixteenth, the annual power of the purse, which is the fundraiser for the United Way, and I won a purse. And also the salute to Derry. On the sixteenth, on the seventeenth, Councilman Harold and Maderas and I attended the Juneteenth at Delago Park and were able to give them a proclamation. And then just last night, we had our third Civic Academy meeting and Diego was the presenter. And we had some really amazing questions and people were really interested in the overview that he gave us of the finances of the city. So looking forward to the next one of those where our fire chief will be presenting information about our fire department and public safety. So Mr. Councilman Maderas.
Okay, I I also attended, as indicated, the Four Creeks ribbon cutting. The June twelfth, the Governmental Affairs Meeting. June thirteenth, Mid Kewee G S A meetings, the salute to Derry on June sixteenth and the June Juneteenth celebration last Saturday. I have been asked by our mayor to present the proclamation for the the groundbreaking on June twenty sixth. The mayor and the vice mayor can't attend. I do sit on the International Agri Center Board as an ex officium member, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that with council's consent. I have also asked Melissa to prepare a proclamation declaring June that day, June twenty sixth, as a certain individual's day in the city of Tulare. And I think all council understands why I won't go any further, but unless anyone has an objection, Melissa, you can go ahead and complete that task, and that will be presented that day. The other than that, that covers everything.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go on to the consent calendar.
If I could, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Maybe they could expand on the drought relief funds that we got.
Oh, that's right. Another three million dollars that came into our city.
We're super excited. I was going to announce it during my comments, but staff applied for an urban. What is it? Urban Community Drought Relief Grant, and that was in January. Also very competitive because it covered just a wide array of water projects. We actually applied for a little bit more than the three million we were awarded. We applied for two million to do a replacement well and another half a million to do smart irrigation and low flow toilets. We did not get that, but super exciting. We were awarded three million dollars to do a residential lawn to garden rebate program. So I announced it at the Board of Public Utilities meeting last week. Staff is working on those guidelines for that program. We're hoping to be able to rebate our residents up to three thousand dollars for replacing their traditional turf with some type of you can't do the artificial turf with it, but you can do the permeable landscape, mulch, rocks, some type of water savings. So we're coming up with those guidelines and we'll take that to the board for their approval and then we'll get the program advertised. And I just know that we're going to have people on the first day submitting applications because we've had so much interest in it.
Right. So you cannot get artificial turf?
No, it's for, it's a lawn to garden rebate program, zero scape. So it went. Yeah. So we're working on those guidelines. As I said, we'll take it to the board for their approval. And then we'll start administering the program, but super exciting. Not a lot of agencies got this residential rebate program. So this is how the state funded money to help with, you know, the watering restrictions and all the watering ordinances. So my staff did a great job. April Latrell, our conservation coordinator, who has been with us less than a year, has earned her keep for ten years getting this, but it was a very competitive program and we're super excited. So look for more information. If people ask you, tell them hold off on doing their their replacement just yet. We're coming up with our guidelines.
And it is first come, first served, right?
Yes, it will be first come, first served.
And I I thought when I read it, it was artificial truth. So I've already put some wrong information out there. So thank you for correcting that.
It's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's that's amazing as well. So we do have a an item on the agenda to cancel the July fourth regular city council meeting. Oh, you already did? So I'm just announcing it. Okay, okay. All right. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed and voted upon by a separate motion. So do I have any consent items that need to be pulled?
Why? I think Councilmember Sagala is pulling just about all of them, but ten point ten. I've discovered that I need to recuse myself, and I think somebody else does also. Ten point ten.
Madam Mayor, I also need to recuse myself on ten point ten.
Yeah, and my purpose, just for the record, is that I have represented one of the plaintiffs in the past, not too distant past, and I would be uncomfortable dealing with this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sagala, what's your list of?
I only got three. I do have ten point six, ten point eleven and ten point thirteen. Hope it was more than that. And ten.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Six, eleven, eleven and thirteen.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
And if Madam Mayor, you would pull item ten point seven.
Oh, ten point seven. Okay.
And if that's the complete list, I'll make a motion unless there's other.
I think there's a few that we didn't pull. So I have a motion to accept the not pulled items on the consent calendar. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll go in order. So the first one to be pulled is ten point six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question. I know that this is a an awarding of a contract to do some striping, and there's a whole list of places that would be restriped, I guess, around the city. And I know that in the last meeting during the budget discussions, we talked about also kind of looking at restriping bike lanes. And I just wanted to ask the question, would this sort of falling, could this be amended to include that? Since you're going to re already striping parts of our streets, would that be too much to incorporate something like that into this?
No, not at all. If, yeah, if there were bike lanes approved from by the council and as directed by the city engineer, we would definitely have this contractor do that work based on the price like they bid. So, yeah, we could incorporate that work.
Or there are bike lanes.
It does. It does already have our existing bike lanes.
Hundred thirty thousand linear feet of six inch bike lane.
So is that is that like?
Yeah, that's three striping existing. So like along M Street. So it's just, all of this is existing striping. It's just redoing it because it fades.
Okay, so that I guess that was my question. So it does include current citywide bike lanes.
Yes.
But but you're saying it could be a possibility. Obviously, the council directed it and there was a funding to include additional ones. Because I know, for example, on West, I'm not sure what happened, but between between Tulare Avenue and Cross, everything else from Barsley all the way up has a bike lane, but that one section is missing it. So I don't know sure what happened. I mean, it's the same width as the rest of the streets, but that one doesn't have a bike lane striping. So and I don't want to hold this up. Obviously, there's a timeline. So that was the reason why I asked the question. If there was time and obviously the council would have to, you know, do two things, one approve that and then obviously approve the funding for it. Is there time? Or is this too late on this particular contract? In your estimation?
Yeah, after it, yeah, once council approved it and the city engineer gave us the direction, we would use this contractor to do that additional striping. Continued there was a funding source for it.
Right, because I because I did bring up, council, you guys recall, you bring up the requests, and then I think things have changed since the last meeting where now we're back up to one point two million and surplus.
We'll discuss that.
So we'll talk. So I think what I like to do is if is approve it. And then later on tonight, if there is an action, the city attorney might be able to to help me. If for some reason the council did agree to that, some money for new stripes, would we be able to incorporate it into a contract?
I think we could do that now, if you give me an opportunity. In this particular item, unless council disagrees in this particular item, the if I I found it amazing that the other bids were so high and this bid was less. And the estimate was three hundred fifty thousand dollars and the bid came in at two thirty one. Providing count, providing staff finds it appropriate, I have no objection to increasing this to cover those items. I'd like to hear what additional striping. Is that inappropriate at this point?
Well, council, I I just need a little clarification. I may be off here, but my recollection of the last, and I missed a couple of meetings. But my recollection of the last discussion on striping bike lanes really came from staff's presentation about how do we deal with on-street parking of commercial vehicles, in particular tractor trailers. Okay, I'm sorry that I must have missed it.
So I think initially that came up and then during the budget discussion, I brought up the idea of setting aside some money to take a look at, maybe, I know in some cities they fill them in with green stripe or green paint. And so the idea would be if there's an opportunity now to take advantage of this contract to add a little bit more money to figure out where we may need new striping. That's why I brought it up to see if there was a time to kind of incorporate into that.
Well, the the thing, I guess what I was getting to was thank you for that addition and clarification, but my understanding is we were going to come back at some point in the future with a more of a comprehensive look at follow up on the vehicle parking and where we would propose to kind of do bike lane striping. Certainly, if we have existing bike lanes that need to be restriped, hundred percent agreement needs to be done now. But if we're talking about creating new bike lanes, I'm not opposed to the city engineer looking at those and where he thinks it makes sense to do that, but my only reservation is, is I think we were also looking at bike lanes in a more comprehensive approach. I'm not sure he's ready to do that yet. That's the only thing I want to make sure. I know I don't want to create an expectation where council is going to think we're going to be doing a bunch of bike lanes, but Michael really needs to look at a bigger picture because there could be some policy decisions council is going to have to look at. We may have to wait to bring that back in the future.
So the best way to deal with this is when when that comes back and we start talking about the additional finances basically is to remember that in this particular situation, the estimate was three hundred fifty thousand dollars and it came in at two thirty one.
Yes. And if at that point in time, we can move forward.
We can remember that that's the case.
We would have to allocate the money at that point in time, but we would know that there is dollars.
Right. So go ahead and make your. Just to prove this.
No, I'm just curious where this is going, but I understand the point was a little bit of, yeah, we're not getting the specifics, but are you, are you? Well, I have one specific. We'll approve this, but we also want permission that we would expand it in the future. So when we make a decision on bike lanes, we don't have to come back and maybe redo this contract, for example.
Well, I mean, I thought I thought the idea would have.
They would have to come back with, from a bidding standpoint.
Correct. This was, it was competitively bid. So so the important thing is to approve this one and give us your direction, and then we can work with the vendor. We may have to rebid the excess, but we can, we certainly know.
Right. I mean, and I saw it on Jen, and I thought I'd maybe be able to take advantage of it, but it's complicated. I mean, I think council and staff knows that at least my intention is to try to do more striping throughout the city and and if this covers existing ones, great. But if we can, you know, there's some gaps, like I said, that one street on the west between Tulare and Cross, somehow it's not striped. But I'll wait. I'll wait for the further broader discussion, but.
So at this point, you're ready to.
I'll move the item as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ten point seven?
Yeah, ten point seven was just informational. And I I met with staff about ten point seven. Thank you for the meeting with Josh. There was a couple of follow up questions, and I did not have time to send it over to Michael Miller. So if other council members find it helpful, the public finds it helpful. To staff, as we set the public hearing on these assessment districts, if there was a recommendation from residents of maybe increasing that assessment or a question of how that comes about, how is the assessment fee directed is, is the public hearing the right time for that? What is kind of the appropriate actions going into the public hearing, or should maybe certain inquiries come to staff before the public hearing?
I would recommend anyone that had any questions, they can view the engineer's report that goes into detail about how those fees are calculated. There's a copy that's available downstairs at the front counter at City Hall, and there's also one on file with the city clerk. And then they can also ask questions in the public hearing.
Okay, so that would that would also cover, for example, if the assessment was one hundred, but if neighbors wanted it to be one twenty because there was other items to be included or adding flowers in certain flower bed or so forth, should that come to staff ahead of time or public hearing as well?
That should come to staff ahead of time. That's a difficult one because there's a set maximum for each district that we can go up to. And if it goes, if what you're suggesting would be to go an amount higher than what's allowable by the district establishment, then it would require a Prop two eighteen election. So it's not necessarily an easy thing to do if it's if the increase would fall within the limits established for the district, then then it's relatively easy. We just need to work with the Parks Department and to come up with an estimated cost and really try to understand what that increase would fund.
And it also depends on the nature of what it is, right? What the work is. So if it was covered originally on the originating ordinance, yeah, that sounds good. But if they came in and they said, we want, we want to build a park playground and use our fees, well, that may not have been covered. Now we have to go through a Prop two eighteen process.
No, thank you. So I can share with constituents, it really is at best to get those questions either to council members, to staff, somebody before the public hearing, be most productive.
Yes.
If there's no other comments, council members, I'll move to approve item ten point seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's move on to ten point nine.
Madam Mayor, the only question, the only request I had is. Uh, Madam Mayor, the only question, the only request I had is I, I appreciate the, um, fact that the mayor could appoint uh, these commissioners and with the council consent, but in the future, I, I didn't see it in the staff report. I'd just be curious to see uh, who the other applicants are. So that's the reason why I pulled it from consent count to make that request in future, future agendas that, uh, that there is reference to others, uh, in regards that we're interested. Um, and I think, uh, just out of fairness that the council would know who they are, because we are the, the ones that do the consent um, on that. And so that's the only reason I, I pulled the item. I, I didn't see it in the staff report.
Uh, just to follow up on, on, uh, what Mr. Scala indicated, uh, uh, I, I, uh, wholeheartedly agree with, with the appointment by the mayor. I know, I know her, uh, very well. She, she's done an excellent job. She will do an excellent job in the future, but the point made by Mr. Sagala is one I discussed with, uh, Josh during our, our meeting, that for us to fully evaluate any appointment like that, it would be helpful to have all the applications. So I, I agree with you in that regard.
Great. Uh, there are no other?
Ten point ten, ten point eleven.
How did we get over there all the way from ten point nine?
Oh, it was ten point nine?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were talking about ten point eleven. Oh, sorry.
Well, ten point nine.
Can we go ahead and seeing as we've talked, talked about it?
You.
Oh, somebody told me you were gonna.
You guys approved, I think, ten point nine and ten point ten through the general motion, but there were a couple that abstained.
No, ten point ten wasn't approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So would you have, Melissa?
So we jumped all the way to, to ten, ten point eleven. And what I'm understanding to say is that everyone wants to see all five of the applications, even though, even though I'm making this decision.
Yes, that would be helpful. Well, you're making a decision and we get to consent.
Yeah, and you gotta prove it.
So that, that would be my thing. Uh, and if there are no other questions, then I'll move to adopt ten point eleven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, ten point ten was the one you're recusing yourself?
I'm recused and Mr. Harrow is recused.
Okay, so that you just recuse and now the rest of us.
So it's on the consent counter, so we don't have to leave.
So Madam Mayor, then, uh, with that, I'd like to move that item, uh, ten point ten be adopted, noting that the Mr. Harrow, Mr. Maderos will recuse themselves from this item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we will go to the next one is ten point thirteen.
Okay, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, council, um, I wanted to pull this one more for discussion. It was similar to the ten point ten. So I decided just to point, uh, this one not to say, you know, I'm opposing the project. Obviously the project's underway. I think what, what I was more interested in was, um, obviously this has been a project that had some big, um, benefits, uh, over off of Teleria Avenue Morrison with, originally it was a stoplight signal, then roundabout, and I think it's still roundabout. And obviously the developer had come before council and had committed and pledged to have that built before anything was, any homes were being built. And now, um, they're in phase one, which is ninety-nine homes. And obviously they're dealing with Caltrans and that bureaucracy and dealing with them on approvals and permits. But I wanted to have, uh, the opportunity to bring up, uh, this item. I did talk to Josh about this and hopefully relate to staff. That, um, there is, uh, there is a, uh, a punch list, I guess, to use Michael's, uh, terms in the past for developments. There's a punch list of things that developers responsible for both onsite and offsite improvements. And as other projects, uh, there's a surety bond, I guess, uh, that is, uh, you, uh, priced and put on the project to cover any of those costs. And from past experiences, you know, we've had, um, some problems or concern with, with that opportunity. And so what I wanted to ask staff, um, and whoever can answer this, maybe not in this project, but it's future projects, is there a way to incorporate, uh, sort of a cost of living or some kind of, of, of consumer increase like for every year or for every extension that the applicants would request that it would go up, uh, obviously we leave it up to staff to determine a percentage or a number so that two things I think could be accomplished. One is would incentivize the developer to finish that punch list in a more quicker manner. And then second, try to, um, protect the city as much as possible in the rising cost of construction or undergrounding utilities or making improvements. So I wanted to find out if that was something that legally we could do and, uh, if so, maybe in a future meeting, have that discussion.
Yes, that is something that we do currently do. Um, the subdivision improvement agreements have a one-year term, after which the developer can request an extension of another year. So at that point, at that one-year point, staff can review the existing security posted, review it as to sufficiency. If we need to apply some type of consumer price index increase to the estimated cost, we can do that at that time and require them to increase the amount of the bonding.
Now, how, how often does that happen? Cause I haven't, you know, in the, in the years that I've been on council, I haven't seen that come before us. Is that something that you need to do without council or is it, I mean, I'm glad to hear that it's available, but I don't know if it's been put into practice or how often it has.
It, it's not something that necessarily requires council approval. Um, it's something that rarely needs to be done because usually as these projects are being completed during the course of the year, they'll, they'll complete a substantial amount of work. So the amount of the required bonding will go down, um, to reflect the fact that they've completed improvements. And that generally will more than, um, make up for the consumer price index cost increases.
Right. Cause that, that's kind of the ultimate goal for, at least for me as, as one council member is to kind of keep up with the cost of construction and planning or whatever costs are, and, and just keep that in mind that that's important because we don't want to get stuck where, you know, to, we're, to sorry, you know, we're stuck in that. It was a one point three million dollar bond and now a three point four million dollar project. We have to come up with the additional two point one to take care of that.
Quite frankly, the Tassori issue was more the fact that the city is not involved or had not have been involved with undergrounding utilities lines like that. So our estimate for what that cost associated with undergrounding those lines was just way off. We had nothing to go by. That's always been kind of a black box between the developer and Southern California Edison. And we never saw any of the costs associated with that. So it was a real learning experience for us as to what the actual costs are.
Right. Well, Madam Mayor, Council, that was the only kind of point I wanted to bring up. I know I just wanted to use this line item as the, uh, as the opportunity to bring that up. So, so thank you. Unless there's other, other questions or comments?
Yeah, um, thank you. I, I did read this and I just had my geography and project completely wrong in my mind. Um, I just want to clarify of understanding the bar, which is the, uh, you know, the forest state subdivision. This is the woodside development. This is, this is a phase one. And so this, really this issue is around the offsite improvements consisting of the intersection and.
The subdivision agreement is for all required, conditionally required improvements, and that includes both onsite and offsite improvements.
So what they're wanting is the one-year extension, really what it's focusing on is because the Caltrans project.
Yes, yes. They've complete, completed the vast majority of all of the onsite improvements. So what really remains are is the, uh, intersection improvements to Teleria Morrison. And then that will also allow them to complete the improvements to Morrison and across their Teleria frontage.
So currently in place under the development agreement is, under these conditions, if, if my memory serves me right, this is the one where they can, they can fill seventy-five percent of those lots, but they can't fill the hundred percent until all improvements are completed.
About a year ago, we removed all of those stipulations regarding building permits issuance. So the new format for subdivision agreements does not place any, um, restrictions on the number of permits that they can pull.
So they have, so with these improvements being done, other than the month, which was just discussed by councilman Sagala, none of those provisions under getting COOs or filling lots apply in any way, shape or form anymore?
No, they don't.
Okay. And that was December when we adjusted or updated the environmental impact report?
That's correct.
Okay. And I might be just be asking the obvious, but I want to ask because, um, I didn't ask the right questions in the past. So with this is we are, we are not, this is not amending anything. Basically what this is doing is a completely normal process that allows a one-year extension that this, this is a normal process to do because the current timeframe is expired and it's a normal process to grant such timeframe for the extension.
Absolutely. This is identical to the other item that was on the consent calendar for the Oak Crest subdivision. Exact same format for the agreement, exact same process.
Thank you.
Well, just real quick then with the, so the, there are ninety-nine homes in the phase one part of the development. And I believe there's three or four phases, correct? In this.
There are total of four phases to the subdivision.
So once the ninety-nine homes are completed and sold and they start on phase two, they'll be allowed to sell homes from phase two without having the intersection done?
The amended mitigated negative declaration that was approved by council back in December specifically said phase one prior to, um, completing the improvements to the intersection of Teleria Morrison.
So the que, so the answer is no, they can't sell anything in phase two until, until this improvement.
But it didn't apply to this, too.
I, I.
It would. Yes, it would. They can only s- sell ninety-nine houses right now. And it's because their environmental document, it shows that there won't be any impacts at the point of ninety-nine houses. So that's all they can sell until this issue with Morrison is, has been dealt with.
Right. Cause we went from them committing to not selling one single house until Morrison inter, uh, intersection was completed and done to then giving them ninety-nine. And I would have a problem if we go beyond that. So it's, we're sure that they're not going to do any, any sales phase two until that's done.
That's correct. With the city would not issue permits for phase two.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, just for their clarification that they still have the restriction that they cannot connect and have open traffic flow onto Morrison Street from the subdivision.
So can we accept that one now?
I will make the motion to approve item ten point one three.
Second.
Mr. Harold, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. Okay. Well, now we've been to public hearings. The first, uh, item on the public hearing is parking and business improvement area report and annual assessments. We'll have the staff report from, uh, Diego. Not first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the Teleria Municipal Code, Section eight point four eight point zero eight zero requires the advisory board of the parking and business improvement area to present, prepare a report for each fiscal year for which assessments are to be levied and collected to pay the cost of the improvements and activities described in the report. The report was presented to and approved by, as it, as it is by the city council on June sixth, twenty twenty-three. A public hearing was set for June twenty twenty-three to confirm the report and levy assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. That concludes staff, staff's presentation.
Are there any, um, questions from the council? Comments? After that? No questions from council?
Uh, yes, um, trying to find, I know that the last meeting I brought up the issue of language in the resolution or whatever document we're going to approve that stated that the city would, um, make, uh, its, um, best faith effort to collect the levies. Is that in the resolution?
I don't.
I don't, I don't see it, but.
I don't believe there's any specific language that has been added that would state that, so we.
I know Mr. Maderos helped me with, um, getting this passed the last council meeting, we're trying to removing one of the sections and so forth. But I was hoping that, uh, I, and I did appreciate and understand the, the concern about, uh, if we were to say we're going to collect all the levies, there'd be some kind of expectation. But I also wanted to incorporate some language that would say, we're going to do our best fit ever to collect. And we're gonna, you know, in the past, there's been discussion when I served on that board for, for a little time about linking a business license to your levy, right? So, uh, that was some discussion. I'm not going that far in this item, but I would like for us to be, uh, to, so that it's out there that we're going to do our best effort to collect.
I think, doesn't it in section three say set assessments shall be levied in the time and manner consistent with the provisions of chapter eight point four eight of the Teleria Municipal Code?
I don't know what that means. If someone can explain it.
Well, perhaps, uh, legal counsel can explain that that encompasses what the obligations of the city of Teleria or that relates to assessments.
Yeah, let me, give me a second. Let me look at the eight four eight.
Okay.
If the mayor, if you wish to conduct the public hearing now, that would give Mario time to.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Are there any people in the council chamber that want to make any comments on this issue? At this time, if not, public hearing is closed.
Is that enough time, Mario?
That's pretty close.
Yeah, there, so there's numerous sections in eight four eight, um, that basically discuss the city collecting those fees. Um, it's not. I would say that I don't read it to be optional. Uh, it's, there's this levy in the city that's going to collect it. Um, there are a number of, of provisions about how it's going to be enforced and how the city should collect that. So.
Well, yeah, cause I think, I think, uh, you know, in section two, I mean, I, I, if that's, if that covers that, I mean, I, I mean, I just like to see, I mean, people have to go find this section and read it and all that. But for me, like in section two, the language says consistent with the report and its recommendations, the city council does hide, does hereby levy an assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four on all business located within said area and will make every good faith effort to collect those assessments.
I think we spoke about the finance department assisting the downtown association with better handling and better collection of that, uh, council member.
Then, then another eight point four eight, whose responsibility is it to collect? Is it John's to go door to door or is it the city's?
It's the city's.
Okay. So that's why, that's my point. I want to make sure that it's very clear that it's the city and not poor John Harmon going door to door, collecting assessments as he's done in the years past. And that was, that's my whole point of, of trying to put that language in there, that it's us, the city responsible for that. I'm not saying you're going to collect a hundred percent, but we make every good effort to get as close to a hundred percent as possible.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, section eight point, uh, eight point four eight does state that the city shall collect. So, um, in reviewing this, when Mr. Harmon was having some difficulty collecting, when the issue of how to collect on that came up several years ago, it was stated in the ordinance that the city shall collect.
Within with that, I mean, if that's in there, I mean, I'd like to just at some future date, get an idea of what that shall entails. How does that work? Are we sending a letter? Are we making a phone call? So I mean, I, to me, if that's already in there that we shall, which, you know, we've known for a long time, but the question is, how do we, how do we collect those levies? What do we do? What are we doing on the city side? Are we sending a letter? Are we sending staff to go door to door? I just want to understand what are we doing in good faith effort to collect those levels? So, so if, if staff understands that, at least if, if there's a consensus from the council that that's a direction you want to go to, and I don't, I won't put it in here. But if we need to put it in here to be more specific, then we'll do that. But I'll, I'll rely on my council colleagues here.
Well, as indicated, uh, by Tracy, it already says shall in the code, which, which, well, I know, but that it isn't a matter of putting it in the resolution. It's a manner of, uh, enforcing what's already in the Teleria Municipal Code. And if it's brought to their attention, then the city attorney can enforce the Teleria Municipal Code.
Well, council members, we do get John Herman certain reports at the end of the month to kind of give them an idea of what we've collected and what's outstanding. Is there anything else that finance should be prepared?
Well, I think, I think, uh.
For council, like a presentation in terms of.
I think, I think for me, it's the idea of who's outstanding and what do I do? I mean, if someone's outstanding and they just don't want to pay it, what does the city do? I mean, because John keep knocking on that door or is there, or is there a role for the city to enforce something that's in the books that says we shall collect it? What is the, what is the enforcement that the city can do?
I mean. Yeah, normal, normal debt collection, right? So it's a, it's a debt to the city, just like anything else. And so, um, there would be options for us to do things like, um, number one, just take them, take them to court. Um, there's other mechanisms to put it on tax rolls, but that's, you know, only helps with property owners. Uh, but there's, there's a number of things, just like we would do with any, any other debt that was owed to the city.
Right. And I, and I'm glad to hear that. And I just hope that we're willing to do it. Cause I haven't heard that that's happened. I don't think we could, I don't think we've taken one. Because I haven't heard that that's happened. I don't think we could, I don't think we've taken one, one person who's owed the levy to collection. So I'm just saying that if that's the tools we have available, let's let's use them.
What's discussed, I I endorse the spirit and what is mentioned here and in support of the section um as our resolution says, the eight point four eight. And I think maybe just a point of clarification too, for for those businesses that are under this assessment that disagreed or had, you know, protest on it. This would be, we had the public hearing, this and this is the public, and this is the time to make mention or offer changes or suggestions to that.
I believe so.
Would that be correct?
Yes.
That's right.
All right, after the liberation of the council, what is the council's desire to do here?
Madam Mayor, I will move to approve item eleven point one, which is adopt a resolution confirming the report recommendation of the Teleri Downtown Association Board of Directors and levy assessments for the Teleri Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Assessments for Fiscal Year twenty twenty four. And as said in the resolution, said assessment shall be levied in the time and manner consistent with the provisions of chapter eight point four eight of the Teleri Municipal Code.
Have a second? Councilman Harold, did you second that?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. The next item coming up for um public hearing is adoption of the city budgets, so we'll have the staff report first, and that comes from Diego.
Good evening again, um, city council. Tonight is the night we adopt our proposed budget for twenty three twenty four. And as you can tell in your in your agenda packet, there have been some changes that I'd like to discuss with council this evening. First of all, a little bit of background, as we finished, as staff finished up the the budget for twenty three twenty four, the city of Teleri maintains sixty seven separate funds with a total current balance of one hundred eighty four million eighty two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars as of six thirty twenty twenty two. All of our funds where all of the fund balances were reconciled to the to the ACFR, which council accepted at the last meeting. And just a quick description that the general fund is the primary unrestricted fund for the city, meaning that it can use its general fund monies for multiple obligations such as public safety, city administration, and parks and rec. The city also has special revenue funds such as ARPA senior services, internal service funds, which include fleet workers comp, enterprise funds, which is the water sewer and solid waste and impact fees. And these funds are restricted, which means they can only be used for the purpose which which revenue is collected. Now, this screen here is going to give council a different uh different um reality than what was presented in the previous two meetings for for city council uh for budget um workshops, excuse me. Since the last meeting, I did, staff did increase the expenditures that council appropriated with fifteen thousand to the Teleri Baseball Association and the Teleri softball associations for utilities assistance. Per council's request, the fifty thousand dollar appropriation has also been set aside for for council discussion programs in the future. Um, since since the last meeting, we also, council will remember that they also adopted the NG project, which is due to close at the end of the month. With that, twelve point nine million is coming on to the city's books. One point eight eight million is due on six twenty nine twenty twenty four. In doing that, Melissa, can you bring up Fund seventeen? What's going to follow next is an explanation of the enterprise fund of the general fund, but I need to explain where that extra surplus is coming from for council's review.
Before you go further, Diego, can you tell us what the surplus was at the last meeting?
The surplus at the last meeting was about uh it was at a it was at a hundred ninety five thousand, but then with the some of the appropriations that council had decided at the end of the meeting, we were at about a hundred and forty thousand.
So we had a surplus of a hundred and forty thousand.
That is correct.
And now we have the NG payment of uh a million eight hundred and eighty six thousand six six seven.
That is correct.
And yet we have a surplus showing of a million two hundred and six.
That is correct.
And that's what you're going to explain.
That is correct. So this is, could we? Thank you, Melissa. So this is our debt service fund. And as we were preparing our our debt services payments for next year for our lease revenue bonds, we consulted with our bond council outside, and as you can see, there's a transfer in eh from the general fund of about two point two million that has come in in the last previous years. Um, if you scroll down a little bit, or can I scroll down one second? Thank you. Toward the back, toward the end of the budget sheet, you can see that we have a healthy fund balance of about three point one, two point seven, and two point seven million in the last few years. That this fund has been severely overfunded over the last few years. When we took on the NG debt, as you can see, it is the energy, the energy debt uh on the on the operation side, yes. Um, we have accounted for that, but we also noticed that we we were able to use some of the funds in the fund balance that is currently there without having to also go back into the general fund and get a two point two million dollar transfer. That two point two million transfer is now one point one. But what staff decided to do was keep, reduce that transfer and keep what the remaining transfer is is in the general fund. So if we go back to the sheet, you're able to see that the jet that the surplus comes from this this adjustment done here on this fund, which now covers the payment for the general lease fund and also covers the payment for the NG debt, which is due in a year. By reducing what the overfunding has been over the last few years, we're able to keep one point one million back into the general fund.
So, so let me, you and I talked about that this afternoon. So because this loan closed just a few days earlier.
That is correct.
In this upcoming budget year, there's a lease payment of a million eight hundred and eighty six thousand six sixty seven.
That is correct.
And you had to find these funds.
That is correct.
And in this reserve, this uh, because I had it.
Debt service.
Uh, it's Fund zero one seven. It was overfunded as far as the reserve.
That is correct.
And the minimum about amount under our schedule is how much? Recommended for this reserve?
Oh, so this is where I did some research, council member, it's twenty five percent for the overall general fund. This particular fund doesn't need a reserve, and it's going back to something Vice Mayor Isher would mention at the last meeting regarding measure I. Does measure I have a reserve? It does not. This was, I felt comfortable or staff felt comfortable moving this fund or making this this adjustment, this financial adjustment on this particular fund for two reasons. It has been overfunded over the last few years, and regarding our revenue bonds, we have a surety claim on it, so if there's any payment or any potential default, we are covered against that payment.
So we have to go to a surety, which is the last thing we would want to do.
That is correct.
So let me ask a couple more questions.
Sure.
So so we've got this reserve and it's overfunded, okay? We had, we had a hundred forty thousand dollars in uh surplus.
Correct.
Okay. Now, I would think council would decide if a fund is overfunded what it would use that money for. Not, say, I have trouble, and that's what we discussed today. I have trouble with a unilateral decision made to take surplus funds and create a million dollar surplus, which is, let me finish, which is what's happened here. The the amount of where we were at was a hundred and forty thousand. We had a million eight hundred and eighty six thousand six six seven of a lease payment that suddenly fell into this budget year. So seem appropriate that if you had overfunded in this particular fund, this debt service fund, what you should be moving out of there is a million eight hundred and eighty six thousand six six seven, not an amount that suddenly creates a million dollars additional surplus, a ma- one point one million dollar surplus, which gives the false impression that we suddenly have revenues that create this surplus. These are one-time funds. Is that not right? That they're one-time funds?
After after the last.
Wait a minute, wait. Aren't these one-time funds?
This is a one-time adjustment, correct?
Okay. We're not going to get that million dollars every year. Are are we, Diego?
We're not. This is an overfunding carried over from previous years. What I'm trying to do is prevent that overfunding from continuing.
That we can do.
Mm-hmm.
But it's my position, Mark, that we shouldn't be taking anymore than what it takes to satisfy this particular payment.
Uh, Councilmember Maderos, I I think either approach is fine. I I tend to prefer your suggested approach in this case, to only pull out of the fund what is necessary to cover the expense and leave the balance of the surplus in this fund and deal with this as we go forward into the future. I would prefer to do it that way. I don't think either way is wrong. I'll defer to Diego if what I'm saying is inaccurate, but I think we could do it either way.
Well, no, what what's happening here is we are tying funds that belong in the general fund to a fund that is very well funded and has the protection to pay its obligations. So I I realize now that maybe I should have called a special budget meeting a week ago to discuss this particular item. But now we are at this point that if I cancel this transfer, council member, I create a deficit in the account.
How?
Because my two point two million and my one point one end up counseling each other out, and I create like my debt of one point eight million ends up being being a deficit now in the books, because the way transfers work and the way it's obligated, and you'll see the overall amount in the previous um in the previous uh uh, the previous slide has some 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 kind of adjust, some a little bit of an adjustment. But in removing or canceling this transfer at tonight, we will be creating a deficit where we're not able to pay for our NG payment.
So so Diego, let me ask you a question to make sure I'm clear.
I don't understand that.
So let's just use different numbers. So if we had two dollars in the fund and we had one dollar of expense, we could choose to take the two dollars out of this fund to cover the dollar expense, or we could choose to take one dollar out of this fund, leaving a dollar in the fund to cover the dollar expense somewhere else. What I hear, I think I hear you saying is is because of the way the books have to be handled, you've you, we've moved all of the fun, all the surplus funds out of this account. Is that right? No.
No. If we go back, uh, excuse me. So if you follow from the estimate, if you follow from the estimated, the second from the right column, you're able to see the transfer in of two point two million, and we got two point two million, and then the way it, Melissa, could you scroll down? I'm sorry. You see all of the transactions, less restricted portion held by the fiscal agent. And then you see our beginning fund balance, you see our ending fund balance, and then you see how our ending fund balance also. So I'm sorry, Melissa, can you scroll all the way to the top again, please? But also is coming in this particular year or this budget year, you'll have the five thousand, you'll have the NG, the energy grant, and you'll have the Inflation Act subsidy coming in. So those are all taken into consideration, and that's why the reduction in the transfer of one point one million would also be created, would be would create a deficit in this particular account where we're not able to pay, because I, because staff did sort of allocate the remaining of the fund balance over the overfunded fund balance back into the general fund.
So let me ask this question.
Sure. I can't hear you, councilman.
I apologize. This loan that's due on on uh of one point eight, this loan payment is due one year from now, right at the end of the month.
That is correct.
Is there a grace period? Most every loan has a fifteen day, twenty day.
There probably is, yes.
Which means it would kick into the next fiscal year.
That is correct.
So we could, we could budget that for a payment on July second of next year. Is that correct?
We could possibly do that.
What would happen at that point?
We would, I would have to remove.
We then turn out, turn around and have a two point two million.
Removing the obligation for this particular year, ye- yes.
That's, do you follow what I'm saying? We've taken from a res- you've taken from a reserve and you've moved it as as general fund monies that has created the a false impression, in my opinion, that we've got a huge surplus that we don't have.
Sir, this is not, I wasn't as cavalier as as it seems. This is general fund money that belongs back in the general fund. I did not purposely take from a reserve account. This fund is a is is funded by the general fund. You see the transfer coming in.
Should that have taken place with discussion as it related to when we were going to move it, how we were going to move it, how it was going to affect affect or explain, tell me where I'm wrong.
Well, this is the meeting where we would have that discussion. I think it's, I want to make sure we're clear. Uh, I don't think anyone is claiming anything has been done wrong here. I don't think, I think what what everyone is seeking is just make sure we all have shared understanding of is there a way to only move what's necessary to cover the NG? Or is the only way of doing this is moving these dollars that you've identified, the the whole of these dollars, which creates this
Deficit?
This def- no, well, well, in this case, a surplus. It creates what appears to be now a surplus in a general fund.
Well, this this does create the way that the the transfers work in the general fund and the way that the obligation for NG in every and and the way it's budgeted, at this point, it is creating a surplus in the general fund. If I go back and I adjust this, I will be creating that deficit of about one point eight million. Um, because I will be counseling a transfer, a transfer is an expense. So then I would have to be canceling that out, and it creates more on the negative side. If council wants to sort of say, hey, this isn't the way this is done, I I'm more than happy to go go in and and like make this adjustment once it's, once it's adopted, but I think the budget needs to be adopted this evening.
Yes, we all agree with that.
Okay, so once what, excuse me, Mark, once that is done and that if council wants that surplus to come back into this account, I can definitely appropriate or council can appropriate those funds to come back into this account at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
If it belongs in the, you know, this surplus belongs in the general account, I that should be for capital uh improvements of some sort, as opposed to
I'm glad you said.
Us throwing it in like it was some.
I'm glad you said that, council member, because my, one of my suggestions is, when we get, when I get back to the other, to my presentation, there is a CIP project that we could, we could appropriate this one million surplus into that account. So that is general fund monies.
Well, I mean, I I just want to chime in. I mean, I think we we, that's a council decision. I mean, I appreciate Mister Maderos's suggestion, but that's something we should decide whether where that goes, and if there's other types of shortfalls or the types of programming or operations, then that's a discussion we should have. But what I'm trying to.
I didn't say that we wouldn't have that.
Well, I know, but you know, we're already saying it's going to.
What I would like to see.
Yeah, it's already going to, you know, go to CIP, but here's the thing, is this particular reserve, what what is this, this isn't the.
I I need to correct. I need to correct council and say that this is not a reserve fund, going back to what met um and I hate to put him on the spot, but Vice Mayor Isherwood at the last meeting said, does measure why have a reserve? No, some of these funds do not have a reserve. The overall general fund has a reserve. This particular fund has been overfunded in the last few years, meaning it's keeping an additional pro- an additional payment for our revenue lease bonds. And that's tying up monies in the general fund that could be used for other things. Now, like I said, I realized that I should have called a special meeting a week ago to discuss this, but at that point, it felt that I was coming in at the one point eight million dollar obligation for an NG project, accounting for that and seeing this fund overfunded, making sure that I paid the revenue lease funds, pay the NG debt, while also releasing some of that overfunding into the general fund for other particular items that council might want to discuss in the future.
Well, why can't we call a special meeting next week and get this straightened out so that we don't have an artificial uh?
It's because I think.
Do it before July first.
I think that the the budget needs to be adopted the second meeting in June, per the charter.
The the only part I want to, I want to jump in and perhaps clarification in this process, and sometimes from my experiences is um, it's it's a term referred to as T accounts, when you write out the Ts and you can show debits and credits, and sometimes visually, it's a better way to see it. But um just to explain this, so we say general fund. This fund is within the general fund. These dollars, Diego, I'm sorry, my question's to you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The, so this fund is in the general fund.
It's a, it's part, it's funded by the general.
It's funded by the general fund. So I guess my my question is, we have, we have one million or we have three million in here. There's, there's a credit, and then there's a debit, and it leaves a balance. And so of that balance, what you're saying is, whether it's got one.
And so of that balance, what you're saying is whether it's got one dollar, it's got one point five million dollars, it's general fund money.
Yes, the transfer, yes.
So yeah, so by doing so is, if I am correct, is that what we're discussing is the operational budget for operations? We actually aren't discussing a general fund overall budget because the general fund has surplus cash in it for which is not part of our discussion.
Thank you. Yes.
And this is part of that additional.
That is correct.
So in doing so, what I think, which I just want to say that staff is doing. The staff is getting in the weeds and is showing a transfer and saying, wait. This is showing one point one, but we could have four million or five million that sits outside of that. And Diego is saying, if you were to do a T, a T presentation, I'm taking a debit from one side. And I'm crediting to another side. So he's taking money out of the fund, but he's not. Is overall, it's already part of the general fund and that the true representation is whether it's tonight. Or it was six weeks ago, or it was a year ago, that one million dollars is actually already part. Of it. Now, so I just want to clarify that it's. That I think what Diego was saying in his own testimony was maybe being cavalier, that I already did the transaction. But I think in coming back is, is that really my philosophy has always been is why. We don't direct staff of how to book items. I, I don't think it's councils. Uh, to get in the weeds and start dictating, be it this or other items of how transfers are gonna go, I debit here and I credit here. Rather, I think it is appropriate that council gives overall direction and it's the power of the city manager with staff of how debits and credits go. To the, so I just want to counter that the point of it over inflating a surplus. It's not because it's actual money of the general fund already. Bringing it in, I think it's appropriate that council could debate. Doing it, you could, but it doesn't change the totals or the amounts per se of what that goes for. So could it be just the NG amount? And leave it at that. Um, it shows down here at the bottom, it still leaves a balance in the account since the, I believe staff is presenting this to council. For the input of getting in the weeds, but I just want to say is the component of over inflating or something, this one point one million. Is in combination of other millions of dollars that in the general fund that we don't discuss. This is just a transfer moving it into the operations part that allows for us to debate and talk over. So. It, it, anything I said incorrectly?
That is.
Or if anything I want to clarify.
Okay, under, I understand that, that, and I'm not an analyst like you are, I'm just a lowly attorney. But let me, let me say this, uh, when I read. The simple item of anticipated general fund revenue. That to me means funds that will be received by the city during the course of the fiscal year as revenue. And when you have a buildup of money. That should have been moved in the past and it's suddenly dumped in there as one time transfer. It gives a false perception of having revenues that we're just not gonna get.
Councilmember, um, may I interrupt? If you go back to the original slide, this transfer is not reflected in, in the revenue side. The revenues have stayed consistent throughout the entire time of the budget process. So this transfer is only living in and outside of the expenditure side. As I mentioned, if we cancel this transfer, it hits the expenditure side. If we go back to, thank you, Melissa, she's bringing up the, we go back to the fifty five, eight forty one, one eighty seven, which is the anticipated general fund. Uh, revenues coming in, which have always been the same since the beginning of the budget discussion. So allow me to, to kind of just explain that, council member, but saying that this transfer, bringing this transfer back, I'm, uh, excuse me, editing, uh, fund seventeen. Does not mean moving that into our revenues. It means counseling and moving on the expenditure side.
It's already in the revenues.
It's, it's not a revenue item. So the revenues are just the sales, um, sales tax, property tax, everything that we collect on the revenue side. We're looking at transfers, which is more of an expenditure coming in and outside of that.
So explain then, and, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong. What I'm saying is, I, I don't like. I don't know how we went, I still don't fully understand how we went from a hundred and forty thousand dollar. Surplus. Ended up having another. Obligation of one point eight. And suddenly we're at a million, two hundred sixteen thousand dollars.
So if we go back into that budget sheet, I'm so sorry, Melissa. If you go back into the budget sheet, I am using, I, I am reducing the budget and also using some of the fund balance that's in that account. If we go into, as Melissa will bring up that sheet, you will see the huge reduction in fund balance at the end of twenty four. You're in, uh, scroll a little bit lower. So we go from one point five million and we go over to forty seven thousand. The reason there's forty seven thousand in there again. This, this fund does not need a reserve, does not need additional funding. It's got, it's got all the necessary funding, revenues coming in, our grant reimbursement from the NG project, our inflation from the NG project. Half of a, a half of a transfer and it's got our obligations to cover the revenue bonds and the NG debt that's due in a year. While tapping into the revenue reserve, I mean, excuse me, the, the fund reserve and what's coming in and I'm leaving about fifty thousand dollars in there. It does not need additional funding because we're covering all of our obligations and we have a surety bond on our revenue funds. Now.
And so where did these excess funds go? I mean, you've moved them into the general fund.
Yeah, can I provide, don't, I want to jump in.
No, no, go ahead.
It helps me if a council member, I'm understanding it too. So I mean, because there's.
You're fine.
If I can maybe just jump in with this screen right here, as I understand it, Diego, correct me if I'm wrong, helping the discussion. To Diego's point is, he's not bringing this into this transaction, as I understand, is not about funds or coming on the revenue side. What they did is you're gonna have one point eight million added on expenses. He used the money to credit the expenses. So it's not new funds coming in, mitigated and reduced to the expense. And then he all, and then the trend, that's, I shouldn't say he, the transaction includes a credit on top of that. So it's not bringing in new money. So if you have an expense of one point eight, how did we get to this extra money? He credited the expense, for example, like three million and that's the, what you see in front of you. So it's actually a credit on the expense side, which drives the million dollars.
That is correct.
That's how I understand that. Now. I think to your, what I'm understanding to your point is, and what we have here is, we had three million dollars. Do we want to transfer three million because it changes the numbers or should the transfer be one point eight? Or should the transfer happen after the budget? And I think what, to that point, what I'm understanding from staff is we're doing it now. So as we go into the budget, that one point eight million of expenses there, we need to mitigate it, we knocked it out. And in doing so, we add, we actually credited. It'd be like getting a rebate from your bank of one point one million. It's not new funds, it's just a rebate of expenses. You get a credit on expenses is what's adding that million dollar surplus. And I'm with you that it's up to the debate of council, do, do, you're saying, or do we approve or disapprove that? And at the same time, do we want to mitigate that amount? It not be one million, it could be five hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. But the first point is, that's how I understand how we're getting to a million.
That, that.
Okay, just to follow up. The problem I've got is that. We had staff present to us what revenues and expenses, estimated expenditures were. And we've gone through this process, we've made allocations and we got down to the point where we had a surplus of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. This loan closes. And this payment is gonna be due just a couple of days before the end of the next fit fiscal year, could go into the next fiscal year. So we got to find a way to pay for that. And suddenly we've made transfers, we've reevaluated this particular fund. And as far as what we're presenting to our constituents. Lo and behold, instead of having a hundred and forty thousand dollar surplus, we've got a one point two million dollar surplus. And we're moving this money for one purpose. It's to figure out how to pay that million, one hundred and eighty six thousand. So it gives a false impression of what our surplus is during the course of the budget year ne- next year. That's what I have trouble with. It's, it, it doesn't give an accurate. Something's. Something's not.
If, if I can, just council member does, I don't disagree, I'm not saying in the merit of your point, I disagree with you. That hasn't even entered the discussion yet. I think just point is, and I think what started this is, do we under, first off, are we at least an understanding of how we came to the million dollars? So that I think was the initial part that was part of the discussion of presentation is how we got to the million dollars. So if we at least understand that, I, I'm with you that the next part of the discussion is argumentative amongst us or debate of. To do about it. I think that's what staff is presenting us is the second stage then is. Um, I'm with you is the discussion, how we want to handle that or give directions.
Can I ask one more question? Mario, uh. What can we do here?
So there's, um, your question to me was on the, um.
What's the charter?
What the charter says. So the charter says that the, uh, projection of revenues and expenses has to be presented to the council, the second meeting in May. So, and that starts the discussions. There's not legal requirements to adopt a budget, like really at all. Um, so. It's, it's a preference that you adopt the budget before the new fiscal year. That would be the prudent thing to do. Um, but the charter is silent as to having to adopt it tonight.
So we could get this, uh. Issue to where, I mean, maybe council doesn't agree, but I'm not comfortable with. With how we arrived at this point. And my preference would be to have a week. To have a discussion and get this result, have the discussions with Diego, have the discussions with the city manager and come back next Tuesday.
Well, council member, I, I, I'm getting, I'm getting eye surgery next Tuesday.
You're what?
I'm having eye surgery next Tuesday.
Well, next Monday, to your point. And, and, uh, uh, find a way to, uh, get this result.
Well, I think for me, I like to see the presentation because there's a lot of other things besides how we got there. And for me, the bottom line question is, do we have? One point two million dollars that this council can figure out how to spend.
That's what I thought you'd say.
Is that, is that, is that the question? I mean, is this money real?
This money is.
All right, so we have one point two million dollars that this council can decide to, let's pretend we don't have one point two million and just say we have one hundred and forty thousand. That's our choice and stick it in some other fund seventeen point five. Or we could continue with the budget presentation, see where we're at and then decide.
I just need to tell, I just need to tell council that part of being a finance director is the ability to be transparent.
Right.
This particular fund has been overfunded in the last several years.
I got it, I got it.
And the reason, the reason I did, and like I said, I should have called a special meeting last week, but the reason why. This, the, this, if, if the auditor comes and says, why is this overfunded? I need to give them an explanation as to why we're carrying an additional fund that's tying funds from the general fund in this particular fund. And the explanation is gonna be, I, I don't know. But this clearly sets this, sets this particular fund to pay for two legal obligations that the city has, our revenue funds and the NG project. While also going back into tapping into our fund reserve, going back into what council member Maderos is mentioning. How do we increase the transfer to one point one million and bring in the debt of one point one eight? And the explanation by Vice Mayor Isherwood, we also tapped into the fund balance and that's when that one point.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. I was able to get it after Patrick explained it and obviously, so I was able to understand that part of it. Um, you know, I, I do the budget in my household and I'm always saying, hey, I want to move this money from here to here, right? But it's all the same money. I get that. But I guess my bottom line question is, we do have one point two million. Real dollars that are surplus that later on this council can figure out what to do with them, how to spend them, if anything, where, what projects. So that is what's before us, right?
That is exactly.
Okay, so then I would recommend that we just continue with the presentation and at the end of the entire presentation, figure out where we want to go from.
Can, can I just ask one point?
Yeah.
And I think Diego, in the trends, as you had said, this transaction's been made. In doing so, could the transaction, if it were a discussion, could be to just cover? The, the future action of the debt. So as we saw on there, the, the energy debt principle and interest. Could the transaction be limited to just cover the one point eight million, which to my understanding? By doing so would just be a wash and take us back to the hundred and forty thousand. Would that, would that action meet those requirements per tonight as you as presented?
So.
It would require a.
I'm, I'm.
Corrected journal entry.
I'm not sure I understand. You're wanting to remove the one point eight from the expenditure side?
No. No, what I'm saying is, is my understanding is you credited the expense. A surplus of the one point eight. That if part of the conversation was only due that we want the trend, if council were to say, we only want the transaction as you did to be the one point eight, no more than that. Would that take us therefore back to a hundred and forty thousand?
The only way we can get back to a hundred and forty thousand is going back to what council member Madero said. If we do have a, a, a period, a grace period in paying this loan and it kicks into July first of twenty twenty four. We can budget that one point eight million payment then. That will clear up this obligation here. For this particular year, for twenty three, twenty four, we would, we would be able to kind of move that out. Because then we would be ta, hoping that that grace period kicks into the next fiscal year of twenty four, twenty five. And budget for that next year for that payment, releasing this fund from that obligation and then moving back the, the transfer. But I, I don't know why council wants to over, consider to overfund a fund.
They just want to understand what they can do.
I wasn't, don't get me wrong, I wasn't debating the why.
Okay.
I'm just going through actions.
I'm sorry.
That if we, just asking that to the point of, you did an action as I described that moved all the funds out of this account. To cover that debt, but instead of moving all of them, that, that's what I'm saying. It basically breaks, it breaks it even. And doesn't add additional surplus.
Yes.
And is there, is there, I mean, I, you may not know this, but is it potentially a cost for that grace period?
Probably, uh, the deal closes on the twenty ninth. So we won't know, um, what the actual final terms are of that loan, council member, into that.
Cause I mean, I, I, that, you know, Mr. Madero's initial would, um, I would hate for us to do that and then we incur additional costs.
Uh, Melissa, can I trouble you to, uh, bring up the spreadsheet that shows the debt schedule, please?
While Melissa's doing that, Diego, let me, let me ask another question. Cause I think right now, don't, let's, let's answer the question, let's not think about. What is the right thing to do, right? Just let's answer the question. So if this account had forty million dollars surplus in it. I'm just throwing out a number, forty million, doesn't matter, make up any number you want.
It's forty million fund balance.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. Let's say this account had six hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra. Above the one point eight million, okay? You, in, in your thinking, you would have still moved all of that over. It doesn't matter what the amount is, doesn't matter the dollar amount. Whatever the dollar amount is, you would move everything above the expenditures over that would show us a surplus, right? And I think Patrick is just asked, council member Isherwood is just asking, could we only choose to move what we needed to cover the NG and leave the balance? Forget the question about whether we should do that or not, or why would we want to continue to carry a reserve in this account? The question is, can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
That was my question.
Right.
This afternoon with Josh. And when we discussed Diego was, why didn't we just move what we needed? And, and that would put us back in a situation where we were at, at the previous meeting of about a hundred and forty thousand.
Diego's.
Which is a true reflection.
Well, it is and isn't. I think Diego's point is, as the finance director, he wants to make sure he's completely transparent.
That, that's absolutely correct.
Right, so that he shows council, yeah, and that's what he's trying to do.
I just got a text message that we do not have a grace period on our loan.
So, but then, but that doesn't solve the problem if we were to just, what is being suggested, just move the one point eight. Or one point eight nine million. It doesn't solve the problem of that fund having been over saturated, I guess is the word. Too much money put in there. It doesn't solve that problem that you need to deal with if you just took the one point eight million, correct?
And I don't think he needs to deal with it.
Well, I mean, with the fund, you know, we as a council or, or, you know, you talked about the auditors, we haven't needed an explanation and all that. No, but he said, what Diego said is that he would have to explain why this fund is.
Is overfunded, yes, that is correct.
Right.
But you just had an audit, Diego, and it didn't come up. We, we, we had a meeting about that just a couple of weeks ago. We just completed an audit.
We did.
I know it's something to deal with in the future, but, but what's been indicated is absolutely right. Let's just move what we need to cover that payment within this budget period. And then we can take the second question as to how we're gonna deal with this overfunding. And not create the, what I consider a false illusion of a million dollar surplus in revenues over expenditures.
So is that my direction, city manager?
Well, no.
I like to hear more council discussion on them.
As is one council member's thoughts.
Well, I, yeah, I I'm listening, I'm taking notes. Um, but then that that just goes back into going back to what council member Sagala said in terms of do, does the city council at this particular moment have one point two million in surplus? Let me just remind you that the answer is yes. Let me also remind you that there was no adjustment to revenues. This is just the on the expenditure side of transfers going in and coming out. And again, we reduced the transfer to one point one million, we incurred debt of one point eight million. But the reason there's a surplus is that we also tapped into our fund balance. And thank you for the schedule, Melissa. This is the schedule from the NG project that shows what we need to account for or what we need to budget in Fund Seventeen in the future years. And you can see the one point eight million drops to four fifty seven in twenty four, twenty five. So it's just a big balloon payment at the beginning.
So council, I'll just, you know, again, my apologies for not being at the last couple of meetings. I I was at one telephonically and the other I was not. From my perspective, it would be ideal to be able to adopt a budget tonight. We've done a lot of, you've done a lot of hard work to get to this point in time. And we are, this budget is this transition budget from a prior administration to a new administration. So there's, there's, it's a little messy. It shouldn't be as messy going forward. We could certainly, if council prerogative is it wants to meet again before the end of June, uh, to have another meeting to cover this issue, we could do that. My thought, unless Diego, you can give me a reason not to, my thought would be to change the number to simply cover what we need to to cover NG and leave the balance, the rest of the balance on the books here and adopt a budget this evening. And then we can later come back, we could do a mid-year budget amendment if we want to. We can, we could take as much time as we want to figure out what we want to do with the rest of that money. But I don't think it's going to be productive to do that tonight. And I think if we try to take the time between now and the end of June to do that, we can meet six times to have that discussion. I don't think that's going to be helpful for us.
I I think I fully agree with you, city manager, in doing that and adopting this particular budget tonight and then coming back with adjustments in the next fiscal year and and through council and city manager direction, direction as, you know, seeing how we we deal with this in the future. This was just an attempt to kind of clarify a particular fund that has been overfunded in the last few years.
And you, and I think, and I appreciate Diego, you know, this administration trying to make sure we're being as transparent we can and we reveal to council everything that we see and we find and we come to understand. I think that's, that's our job, that's our job. But right now, the problem I think it creates for us is, is like, okay, now we got to decide what we're going to spend one point two million dollars on. And I don't think that we're ready to have that discussion tonight.
We don't really need to spend it, city manager. It just goes back into our.
I wholeheartedly agree. I wholeheartedly agree.
I mean, we'd we'd like to hear.
Well, just, just what we think as. With Mr. Maderos, the only, I don't mean to cut you off, so I think you would agree why I'm cutting you off. It's just with Mr. Maderos walking back, the city manager had presented kind of that option and perhaps, I don't know if Dennis got that, if Mark, real quick, you want to give the ten seconds to update.
Sure, sure. I I was just, Dennis, I was just saying that, you know, from my perspective and where I sit tonight, we ideally, we adopt a budget tonight. Uh, the new budget year takes effect July first and it's it's more than just adopting a budget. Once you adopt a budget, there's a lot of work that has to happen on the backend and finance to put everything in place so that come July first, the departments can actually start spending the money, buying the vehicles, buying the, all the things we have to do. So we could certainly, if it's council's prerogative, that it wants to meet again next week to deal with this issue, we could do that. But my recommendation would be let's adopt a budget tonight by simply trans on paper showing the 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 dollar amount that we need to cover the NG expense, leaving the hundred and forty thousand dollar surplus. We know there'll be more than that in this fund. And we can come back in the future. It doesn't matter when we come back in the future, mid-year budget and do a much budget amendment, it gives council more time to think about.
Well, if I can interrupt you, Mark, I'm sorry. We can then go back to what was suggested initially, going back and increasing the the transfer back to where it was, two point two. Okay, um, clarifying that, and then that would take us back down to about a hundred and forty in surplus for this particular year. But now council is aware that this particular fund is overfunded. And if they wanted to come back later in the year, say we can, Diego or staff, can we use funds from Fund Seventeen that have been overfunded to do some particular projects?
Yes.
That's my suggestion and recommendation.
Yes, I agree with that.
Diego, when I left your office this afternoon, that's exactly what I thought we understood we were gonna do is just move what's necessary for this payment. And we can decide in the future, you know, if there's.
Council member. I am aware.
What we're gonna do with these funds. And I I don't have trouble with.
I I just wanted to present what the mechanics of the budget would be in one scenario versus another. So that's, like I said, I should have called a special meeting um, to discuss this particular of fund, but this is where we stand tonight.
So Diego, let me ask you that scenario that you just laid out. Uh, if we were to discuss this in the future, would we have less or more money to discuss?
I'm sorry?
In the scenario you just laid out.
Mm hmm.
Would we have less or more money to discuss on how to spend? Cause I don't want to jeopardize us losing any money.
If Melissa's gonna kill me.
Because I mean, I appreciate Mr. Maderos's thoughts and all that, but if we're ready to vote on his budget and then.
If we could go back to. If we could go back to the budget sheet, Melissa, please.
I just, uh, we can have more or less in the future.
You're gonna get the opportunity to spend. Well, it's just, I don't want to jump in. I I think the answer has been, at least as I can respond as a council member, to my understanding is the fact is that there's roughly one point one million dollars. There's, there's one point one.
So if we go to the top and you see the two point two has been reduced by one point one, if I make that transferred back to two point two, you have an additional one point one, which you saw the ending fund balance at about forty seven thousand, that gets right, that gets increased by that one point one million. So again, we we're we're going.
That account stays about the same, except you've got the NG payment out of it, if we do what we're talking about.
Right. It it accounts for the NG payment there, right? You sell the revenues coming in for the grant and the inflation. So that's accounted for on the revenue side, plus getting an additional one point one million in the transfer just.
And then, and then our uh, general fund uh, revenues and expenditures, our surplus will be about a hundred and forty thousand.
That is correct. And that would take us back to the discussion from previous council about making that fifty thousand dollar appropriation of the adjustments to the base lines up, Ali.
Okay, with that adjustment, I, well.
Okay, we haven't had the, haven't not had the public hearing part of this yet.
I know. I so. Just, and I'm not making a motion. I said, that adjust.
I thought you were ready.
I'd be satisfied, but he hasn't finished his presentation.
I know. So if we. You guys, yeah, okay. So can we finish the presentation and then I can open the public hearing?
Thank you, Melissa. Apologize for, so we've discussed this slide if we can, oh, I will go to the next. So this is our budgeted revenues for the general fund. Uh, forecasted revenues are at fifty five point eight million. You'll see what makes a big portion of this is other sales tax, which includes, uh, excuse me, other taxes, which includes uh, sales tax, measure Y, measure I, um, and all those categories. Uh, transit occupancy, business license, et cetera. Um, again, sales tax tends to be the biggest portion coming into the city. Property tax and all the other ones are listed on here as well. So this is our pie chart of the of the budget revenues, which again, have not changed since the beginning of the budget discussion. This here is an overall fund summary, which I think council received in their packet. You'll see what the total is for the general fund and what makes up a portion of the of the one hundred eighty four thousand. Um, we go into the special revenue funds, uh, special revenue funds, transportation, which is seven point nine million. Special revenue, revenue funds all purpose. You will see some negatives in some of our fund balances. That does not mean that the fund is in trouble. It just means that in terms of a fund balance, it's, it's in the negative portion of it. Uh, enterprise funds account for ninety eight point, ninety eight point two million of the overall uh, fund summary for the city. Uh, internal service funds, twenty one million. Then we get into CDBG and general debt service, which is about forty seven thousand, which is the previous slide you saw. Um, moving along. This here is just an overall summary for the city. Um, we, you'll see that the general fund and just the starting balances, the revenues, the expenditures and the ending working capital, along with the fund balances detailed this year in in the budget. Uh, I think that was something that I wanted to do was kind of give staff and residents and council an ability to see what a fund balance is at the end of the year, whether it's in the positive or the negative in terms of fund balances and also what type of working capital that fund has. So this one, as you go across, is just a listing and a breakdown of the numbers from the previous slide. This one leads into our enterprise funds, which is our water, A V, uh, water sewer, some aviation. Now, I also, to be clear, these numbers are different than what Director Whitfield presented at BPU. And the reason for that is because she accounts for depreciation, which is a non-cash item. Uh, budgeting, however, is on a cash basis, so I don't include that. But Director Whitfield and I spoke about that. So we've agreed to disagree on that. Um, it is perfectly accounted for, so there's no adjustment to the expenditures exceeding the revenues. It's just sort of the way it's presented on the budget side and on the presentation for the um, BPU. Uh, this is our impact fees. Um, you will see many of these funds again have a working capital or some kind of negative activity on it. Lastly, our internal service funds, our CDBG and our general debt. So you will see that the ending fund balance is the one hundred eighty four million that I I spoke about at the beginning of the presentation. Uh, our expenditures are two hundred and nineteen, revenues are about one hundred ninety one coming in total, and our estimated fund balance is two, two hundred eleven at the end, at the beginning of the year. So I worked my way backwards on that. Uh, these were the personnel requests that have been incorporated into the budget. So these are taken into account. Um, they have been appropriated and as soon as ca- if council agree up adopts the budget this evening, these will be taken to effect and have been accounted for for each particular department. And that concludes the presentation of this year's budget.
Thank you so much, Diego.
Sure.
I'm now going to open the public comment. I mean, the public hearing. Is there anyone in council that wishes to speak? Mr. Bender.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, fellow citizens, Jason Bender to Larry. Uh, as you not see my speaking jacket, I was not planning on speaking tonight, but after an hour of listening to this, here we go. Uh, number one, please approve the budget today. Uh, number two, we don't have extra money. Um, just because some money becomes available does not mean that it's needs to be spent. Um, I would defer to city manager. We could probably in about thirty seconds come up with two hundred million dollars that we need to spend. And just because we have one point two, that's a nice chunk to help with some major project that we can't fund. Um, probably I would ask for mid-year to go ahead and look at maybe what we do with that one point two million dollars. And maybe Diego can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way, um, uh, from my accounting class, it kind of sounds like department seventeen, we'll call it, could be any department in the room. And they just decided after the last meeting to say, hey, I don't need one point one million dollars. I'm going to leave it in the pot. Was that semi right? Instead of taking two point two, they only took one point one. But anyways, that's just what I kind of understood. So please approve the budget, please don't spend any extra money and let's move it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to address this issue at this time? If not, I will close public comment. After deliberation, lengthy deliberation, are we ready to come to a consensus?
I, I'm, I'm, I mumble coming in and I think it's just making sure that is that the full process. So, so this is the operating budget. Uh, projects budget, including the capital improvement plan. So we're not going to go through projects or components. This is just the operating budget in front of us.
Uh, we could present the CIP if you'd like.
Okay, the uh, the thank you. Okay. So, and I'll leave that to the council members' thoughts. I think as you opened it up, um, my, my view of of kind of what we went through and reviewed is, I do appreciate what staff did is bring this element before council. Uh, as one council member, what I can say is I I stick with with my notion that I've tried to do as a council member is rather council gives direction to the city manager. And we have the information in front of us and what you do with the information is then give direction to city manager. What are the needs? What do we want to do? And then staff go from there. I'm, I'm not a fan of getting in the weeds or directing of how booking should happen. And I think tonight, which I appreciate a staff just brought this whole issue to make it transparent. With that, I I do, my view is I agree with the discussion that the transaction be done just to break even to cover the expense of the NG payment. And I think that what we can come back to is, doesn't have to be limited to just tonight, but as council done, we discuss our needs, what's the needs of the community. There have been needs around demolition of the old library. There's been needs around what to do with the women's club. And we're going to talk about CIP, we could, there's going to be needs. And I think rather, instead of getting into a debate of one point one million, we we make it zero, leave it back to the balance of what has been discussed of the hundred and forty thousand. We do have expenses coming up this fiscal year. We know we are going to have increases in in labor potentially. There's going to be other costs that present themselves. And I think what we have been good at and we're improving at is when there's a need of the community, we bring it up as a council and we give direction to our city manager, what we want to do, what we want to fund, and we break, and we break that out. So that's, that's my view of, and just open to council, other council members' discussion. That's my thought for tonight.
I think, I think you've pretty much understood where I was coming from. I I'm ready to approve this budget. If we only do what it was that uh, that we anticipated, we had a hundred and forty thousand dollar surplus or somewhere in that vicinity. But we had this lease payment that has to be made before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, our CFO went to a particular fund and pulled the money for that purpose, except he pulled even more. And my suggestion, Mr. Isherwood, is that we follow direction and approve the budget with only bringing over that amount of money necessary to cover this payment and and get us back to where we were at before. And then if we've got, and then the issue, the separate issue of excess funds in these various accounts, overfunded, we can deal with a staff report by uh, by our city manager. Is that correct? That's a future agenda.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I'm sorry if I missed it, but we did have a presentation on the CIP.
Uh, can the council members, I do have a presentation I can provide on the CIP. It probably would be about twenty to thirty minutes.
I mean, I seems uh, that's part of the budget. I'd just like to know what we're spending it on. So I mean, every single budget I voted on for seven years has had that presentation, so.
What's left? What's the exact amount, Diego? Uh, if we do the transactions as Mr. Isherwood and I have indicated as far as uh, I mean, what were our revenues in excess of our surplus? What will it then be?
So if I could put, get uh, council's attention to the slide that I just put up, you'll see that it's got one point two one six, one two six five is the nexus. And that's what that transfer is the budget is currently being presented. I would have to excuse me, as I use my calculator. One, two, one, six, two, six, five. Now, going back to that transfer, we we're increasing that transfer from the one point one to and to back to two point two. So I'll be removing one point one million from this account, from this balance, excuse me. And council now has an excess in revenues of a hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred sixty five.
Still surplus, but it's one sixteen?
Two sixty five, yes.
With that adjustment, I'd be ready to uh.
Please do.
Move to uh, adopt the budget, but I think Mr. Harold should be given the opportunity to weigh in and any further comments that Mr. Sagala has.
I think this has gone on long enough and it's time to make a motion and move forward.
So, uh, we're not gonna have a CIP presentation then?
That'll fall.
No, isn't that part of adopting the budget? No, isn't that part of adopting the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can't adopt a budget without CIP, I mean, at least we, we're, and, and we're not even gonna deal with the personnel control, I mean, the personnel, whatever. Item, you know, we're just gonna accept that we're high, we have four hundred employees or whatever the number is. But I just like to know what, what we're spending our CIP, I think the public like to know what we're spending CIP on. You know, if uh, if the council really wants to do our due diligence, then that's part of the process.
Let's go.
Go ahead, Michael.
Alrighty. I'll try to go through it as fast as I can. Okay, just as a reminder, capital approver programs, a short range plan that identifies capital projects consistent with the city's general plan and equipment purchases, provides a planning schedule for their implementation. It identifies options for financing the projects in the program. The city, we uh, operate under a five-year CIP that we update every two years, and this is one of those years. So the purpose of this uh, presentation is to show you the proposed projects and the funding sources that are under both the city council and BPU purview. And it's a two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-eight capital improvement program. So we'll start off with transportation projects because it's the nearest and dearest to my heart, and we have the best pictures. Uh, just as a reminder, as we do our street projects, um, there is a portion of the each project that is funded by the utilities. Uh, this slide here just illustrates how when you have water sewer store drain services within the street, how they're actually responsible for the portion of the roadway above it. If we were to go in and work on a sewer line, for example, we'd trench the road and we'd have to go in and resurface the roadway above uh, across that trench, so uh, we make that assumption that as we're going through and doing a street project and doing the water sewer storm drain line improvements as well, those uh, respective enterprise funds will help pay for a share of the cost of the street project. So, here's the beginning of the list of the uh, transportation projects. The ones that are highlighted in yellow, which are none on this sheet, are the new projects. If it's not highlighted in yellow, these are carryovers from the prior um, CIP, so they're already approved. So I'm, I'm not gonna go into detail on them. The first new one for this uh, twenty-three to twenty-eight CIP is the Bardley sidewalk improvements. This is the uh, project to go in and add sidewalk along the north side of Bardley Avenue um, between Morrison Street and Mission Oak High School. So we're anticipating that project happening this fiscal year, hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars um, being paid for on a gas tax. Next new project that you haven't seen before, wasn't in the last CIP is the Prosperity and J Railroad Crossing Improvement Project, we got a grant through the state, through the feds for this project. It will improve the existing U P railroad crossing prosperity avenue just west of uh, J Street. Uh, the cost of the project is two million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. Like I say, it's funded by our share is gonna be from our gas tax, um, SB one funds. And then the federal Christie grant will pick up uh, about eighty percent of that. Next new project to the CIP is the Tesori Bella Oaks Improvements. Um, we are anticipating the, going through the design this coming fiscal year, nine hundred thousand dollars with construction, hopefully that, that same fiscal year. Um, but more likely, we've been told, talking with um, Southern California Edison and Caltrans, the construction probably won't be until the following fiscal year, which would be uh, twenty-five, twenty-six at the best. It could very well even go further than that. Uh, the project would be funded through state highway diffs, um, other general fund CIP and the settlement funds we received um, through the settlement agreement with Delago Place.
Can you give some examples of what six oh one is? Is that other projects?
Six oh one is just general fund. Fund six oh one.
So that does not, that, so that six oh one would not take away from any other uh, CIP projects?
It would, it would absolutely compete with other projects that are funded with general fund dollars, yes.
Well, I guess, well, my, my question is, I know there's a shortfall, and the shortfall has to come from somewhere. And the somewhere right now is, does that, could that jeopardize or could that disrupt or delay other projects that need to be done throughout the city? Or any other parts of the city?
Yes.
And how is that gonna be determined? Is that a staff decision or is it gonna come to council?
Uh, we basically look at the available funding and we prioritize it based on that. And it's part of the CIP is how we've scheduled it. So we were accounting for it right now, taking place in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, based on the availability of funds, but if, if you wanted to delay it, we'd go back and
My concern is I'd like to be able to know if a project in my district is gonna get impacted to pay for a project that is over there up at Tesori. I'd like to have an opportunity to at least say, hey, I don't agree with it. And I just find out, hey, your improvement on such and such is delayed another five, ten years.
Council.
Because we move the money, so that's, that's my, my concern that I've brought up in the past that I have concern now is how that process is gonna be determined.
Council member, this particular project, we've already stated to you that this will be coming back to council for a decision. Because we don't know, he's putting in the, what he anticipates, Michael's putting in what he anticipates the total cost to be, but we will bring this project back to you in the future. And you will decide, are you going to do all of it with underground utilities, for example? Are you going to do it with overhead utilities? You know, are you gonna face project? We will be bringing this project back to you for a vote as an own project on a future council agenda, when we have that information, when we're ready to, to share that information, we're not ready. We just have to plug something in here because we anticipate council will want to fund some aspect of this project, we don't know how much yet. You will make that decision in the future.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that part of it. What I am a little concerned about is whatever we determine as the city manager stated the options, where's the money gonna come from? I'm okay, however, we figure out underground, above ground, medium ground, whatever. But I'm more concerned about, yes, we decided his option, now we're gonna
And we will tell you that at that time.
And that's, that's my big concern.
Yep, we will definitely tell you that at that time of what we're proposing the dollars to come from.
And I appreciate what you're talking about, but every time you say that, I remember who it was that voted along with the majority that caused this situation to occur where we had this huge deficit. So you vote that way, this goes south, we have a huge deficit, and now you're concerned about depriving these people of what we settled this lawsuit for. Had funds to get this completed because it might affect your district. Well, guess what? Your decision affected Delago and affected
Right, Dennis, look, you keep bringing it up, yes, I voted for that situation, but I had the courage. I had the courage to step up and try to fix it, unlike you who doesn't wanna Sick of that, right? Every single time. I bring up the fact that this day should be funded. I don't agree with your, you know, you have some courage to step up and talk
Gentlemen, you will, however those actions go, you will need the three of us to be involved in that decision.
Let's move along, please.
I get it.
Michael, can we take the next slide?
The next uh, new project to the CIP is the Tillery Morrison Street Roundabout. This is a project that was largely funded by Caltrans, uh, they put up one point six five, or no, sorry, one point two five million of their shop dollars to help put in a roundabout because that's what they'd really like to see at that intersection. Um, the city will have a share coming through our state highway development impact fee funds. So overall, these are the, at the bottom there is the to project totals for transportation projects. You can see over the five-year period, we've got seventy-four million dollars and change worth of projects. Administrative projects, uh, new project, annual marketing and social media. That's just a one-year um, funding obligation fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, a hundred thousand dollars, and it's being funded by ARPA funds. Uh, we've started a, a project for the corporation yard, we know that there's improvements needed out there. Perhaps a complete rebuild, perhaps a relocation, we don't know yet, but we need to start putting funds aside for um, whatever we do in the future, so starting in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we're putting in three hundred thousand dollar.
There you go.
And water CIP, uh, solid waste CIP and sewer wastewater CIP. Uh, we've got our courthouse renovation project, uh, which is also this year, twenty-three, twenty-four. We're estimating uh, four million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars uh, paid through a combination of ARPA, general fund CIP, um, two thousand eighteen lease revenue bonds. And we did put that project out to bid, unfortunately, we didn't get any bidders, so we're looking at alternatives to deliver the project and hopefully we'll have something for you soon in that regard. Other new uh, project is our homeless shelter and fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, seven million ninety-one dollars and five hundred and sixty. Um, also funded by ARPA, general fund CIP, uh, contribution from the county from their ARPA funds and a federal earmark.
And Michael, we will need to change this later, reflect the IRF round to one point four million dollars.
Very exciting.
We don't need to do that tonight, but we don't have the official award yet.
Yeah. Um, a project to put additional cameras out at the airport for security. Uh, this fiscal year, fifty-six thousand, five hundred paying, paid for through the general fund, CIP. Uh, disaster recovery program, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars paid for through our tech, technology fund. Um, we have two planning projects, uh, one that's basically done, it's the GIS planning grant, we still have a little bit of dollars left in it, so we showed it as a carryover until this um, next fiscal year, we're actually gonna carry over that ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And uh, zoning code grant, we got to go and update our zoning code and it's a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine dollars this fiscal year. Parks projects, we've got a small project at the Elk Bayou Soccer Park to um, surface the parking lots with road oil to try to stabilize the dust and make the striping that they do out there for the parking spaces last a little longer. That's fifty-eight thousand dollars paid for uh, general fund. Our big project, Zuma Park renovation, um, we're showing all costs, that's not just construction costs, but the um, the construction management, the inspection, all the other associated costs. Put it up around ten point eight million dollars paid for by ARPA, park diffs and other general fund CIP. That project is currently out to bid, so we're hoping to get some good bids on it. We have the
Mike, what does that, does that particular funding also include the parking?
The parking.
The parking for the amphitheater, I mean, there's, I saw designs where we were gonna have a bunch of parking across the street and city hall, I mean, is that, is that an additional cost?
It's a redo, it, it does include redoing the in-street and current avenue frontages.
But not the new since property. So that would be additional cost if we were
If we did, we would forget to counsel for a future decision.
It'd be a separate.
Cause I mean, I, I, I'm just it gone, went from like a six and a half million dollar project to now ten point eight million dollar project.
Yeah, current construction costs is estimated by the architect at eight point nine million. And so that additional cost above the eight point nine is all um, construction management, um, inspection, uh, labor consultant, all those, all those factor in.
And when we bring any one of these projects back to you, we'll have all the details of all the costs funding, yeah, if you want to fund all of it, a portion of it, here's where the dollars could come from. Those when, each one of these is when you would make those decisions.
There'll be, there'll be separate contracts that have to come to council for review and approval. Canine Dog Park, um, paid for through the park diff funds, um, this coming fiscal year, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Alpine Property Improvements, um, paid for through general fund CIP. If we move forward that project, unless we can find some of the other funding sources, but that's only one identified at this point. Um, estimated construction costs are four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do uh, frontage improvements at that property. Public safety projects, we've got two new ones, um, police department dispatch radio replacement, that's funded through ARPA. Um, eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, it's just a remainder, it's a carryover from a project that's essentially complete, I believe. Um, another project for police and fire CAD RMS replacement, also ARPA funding, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six ninety-five. Oh, two more, um, taser replacement and radio replacements for PD. And they both come out of the equipment replacement fund. We've got three surface water projects, um, first one is to up, do some upgrades to the existing lit storm drain lift station at Maple and D Street. We also have one for the Tulare High School Farm Storm Drain Lift Station, both of those this coming fiscal year. Um, paid for as storm drain operations, other general fund CIP. Um, following fiscal years, we've got in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars to help with ponding basin rehabilitation and cleaning, that's going in and uh, ripping the bottom, cleaning out the weeds. Um, helping them to uh, perk better so we can benefit our groundwater. And uh, once again, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, another twenty-five thousand. Technology and equipment replacement, we've got a finance system replacement paid for through ARPA, that's a big big cost there, this coming fiscal year, one point six five million. Uh, we have another project that we know is in the future to replace our permit system. We um, it's a big, major portion of it, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, we have yet to determine what the funding source will be to pay for it. But we are gonna start this coming fiscal year and putting sixty-five thousand dollars aside to uh, help towards that through the equipment replacement fund. We also have an equipment replacement fund, uh, ten thousand dollars a year. And SCADA server replacement, um, eighty thousand dollars paid for through the equipment replacement fund. IT stor- data storage expansion in twenty-four, twenty-five, a hundred thousand dollars and telephone system replacement, twenty-four, twenty-five, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Sewer wastewater projects, we have Aeration Lagoon Evaluation, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four paid for by sewer wastewater CIP, grit system rehabilitation, a hundred thousand dollars this coming fiscal year, same funding source. Industrial, what does WS, Steven, was tank possess stand for again? I just know either, uh, tank and scrubber rehab, um, one point one two five million paid for as sewer wastewater CIP biofilter pump rebuild, uh, domestic headworks upgrade, domestic sledge drying bed rehabilitation. These are some pretty high dollar projects, but uh, that's anytime you deal with the wastewater treatment plant, the dollars are high. Uh, industrial wasting tank addition, three point six million. Percolation pond rehabilitation, um, that's gonna be an annual two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, starting in twenty-five, twenty-six. And industrial and domestic digester addition, high dollar costs there. Septic receiving station upgrade, this is where people can go and uh, dump their trailers and septic tanks. Um, upgrading it four hundred thousand dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five. So you can see overall sixty, just almost sixty-four million dollars in the next five years. Water projects, we have the state revolving fund grant project, this has to do with the, us agreeing to provide service to Metheny Tract. Um, seven million dollars. And this coming fiscal year, new well programmed, well, four point two, three million dollars this coming fiscal year. Another new well fund funded through our development impact fees, trying to stay ahead of the game for water supply. Trying to stay ahead of the game for water supply here. Uh, project to extend the water line to craft and South High Street. That would either be from Rankin avenues down south to, uh. Avenue one eighty four, or perhaps we might tie it in with that, um, with any track project. Uh, Rankin Avenue, Highway ninety nine water crossing. We know we need to extend the water main under ninety nine to loop in the system at the airport. That's what that project is. Computerized maintenance management system for the water. Um, department. TCP treatment. This is just, I believe, uh, just a kind of a holding. Provisional. Um, in case we end up having to add additional TCP treatment to a new well. And, uh, the way things are going, that's probably fairly likely. And then water storage tank and booster station. So we're the exact location of that. We're hoping the water master plan will help us identify, but. Water storage tanks have been a big benefit to the city and we're looking to put in the next one. Oops, I didn't do the backup. So total water system projects, forty three million, five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So I know I rushed through that really fast. Um, I can have this, uh, available for anyone who wants to, to review it later. Uh, we'll print it up in a nice C I P book for everybody. And if you have any questions or feedback, happy to take it.
Questions, comments?
Um, thank you for that. If it. If myself or maybe others would like it emailed, that that'd be great too. Um, a few questions, I think, help me remember. So I, this may be under ARPA commitments. Was, um, one of the, the South Valley, the International Way Development Project where we were in a. Public private partnership with development. I thought we'd made commitments. Or I'm just touching on our, because I know all of our ARPA wasn't mentioned here. Let me start with that. All of the art but wasn't mentioned here.
No, there was, for example, the million dollars or so that council had for, that's knows aren't C I P projects where you.
Got it.
Yeah, obligated money to certain organizations. That's not part of C I P.
Okay, okay. Um, the highway ninety nine, the under the, that you'd mentioned, and I thought. We, I thought that was on our office schedule to be funded under ARPA.
There is one to add a water crossing north of Prosperity Avenue, and it was listed. It just wasn't highlighted because it was in the, the last C I P.
Okay. I. I have a question, but I think it goes back to our other operating budget, but it came up and sorry, this isn't C I P. I don't want to too much tangent, but, um. What are, are fee for transit? So we pay to the vendor, the vendor feed the transit association and, um. Uh, maybe if, if Mark, um, I don't, I didn't isolate that out of the budget, but if, um. Could share later what that number is or what our annual payment is.
Are you the annual payment? You're now looking for the capital expenses related to buses.
No.
Okay.
If I'm correct, we, we are in a joint powers agreement with the transportation authority. What, what's our annual?
Okay, got it.
I believe that's our L T F.
Yeah.
A lot.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere near, it's a little less than that, I think, one point five, but okay.
And just recapping as well, and I think for those at home that heard this, uh, massive list of, uh, projects, but. This does not, we are not. This is not encumbered. Uh, we haven't spent this, but this is what's on the schedule. And then as these, this is because council has said this is what we want on the schedule with the staff and that as those projects come to fruition and then the timing and placement. They come before council and that's when we have. The presentation or decision on funding. So I know we've had this elaborate discussion on funding, but this doesn't encumber any funds so forth. This is just the plan. And then moving forward.
That's exactly correct. This is like our strategic plan, our battle plan as to how we're going to, uh, fit projects in.
Any other questions, comments? No. So we are now done with the discussion on the budget, correct? You deliberated. No, we could open public comment for anything on the C I P. Is there any public comment? Then we'll close public comment. Are you still ready to make a motion?
Uh, on the aspect of, uh, a resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty four operating budget. And all sections therein. Uh, I make a motion to adopt. The budget subject to the adjustment we discussed as a. Do you follow Diego as it relates to, uh, the unexpected payment in the next fiscal year as opposed to afterwards?
I do, I do, um. If I can read the calculation, that's okay, council member, uh, the adjusted revenues or the forecasted revenues for twenty three, twenty four are fifty five million, eight hundred forty one thousand. One hundred fifty eight, one hundred eighty seven dollars. What has been presented this evening has been expenditures of fifty four thousand, six hundred twenty four thousand, nine hundred twenty two dollars. Leaving an excess reserve, uh, one, one million, two hundred sixteen, two hundred sixty five dollars. Of that one million, one hundred thousand dollars, but we moved back into fund seventeen, leaving an overall surplus of a hundred and sixteen, two hundred sixty five dollars for the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
Fine. And Melissa has those figures for the resolution, correct, Melissa? Or you will have them. Um, that, as to that resolution, I make that motion with subject to the figures that have been indicated.
You have a second?
I will make, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Did I hear everybody say aye? Okay, all right, then it passes five to zero. The budget has been passed. And it only took two and a half hours.
Well, we have other resolutions within this to, uh.
Within the same thing?
No, I think they're separate, aren't they? Hmm? Yeah.
Okay.
I'll let you do the next one. What was that?
All right, well, I think the next one is for us to adopt the resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year. Twenty twenty four position control budget. And fixing the rate of compensation of regular full-time and part-time employees. Council members, seasonal temporary employer, employers, employees.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. The next one?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight. Projects budget including capital improvement. Plan. And that will be my motion if there's a second.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to one.
And I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution establishing appropriations limits for fiscal year twenty twenty four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the entire budget passes. Five to zero. All right, we'll move on to general business. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item unless otherwise extended by the council. The first item is Zumball Park Amphitheater Operator Management Agreement, which will be presented by Jason Glick. Or.
I'll introduce it and then I'll turn it over to Jason. Counsel, uh, thank you so much, uh, for considering this item. Couple of things I want to mention to you. Uh, this item, you know, this evening is, uh, available for your decision. If you want to vote on it, if you have questions and concerns, you're not ready to vote on it. We certainly can continue it, uh, to the next meeting, but I want to remind you of a few things before we get into the agreement. First, the overall goal of this agreement is. This, this project from the beginning in terms of operating Zumball Park and the concert series. It's never been proposed by management to be this as a vehicle by which the city makes money. We don't want to lose money. In a perfect world, we, we cover all of our expenses and maybe the city makes a little bit of money. But the, the purpose of Zumball Park and the operator agreement in the concert series is to drive people downtown. It's an economic development tool. It's not a tool for us to try to maximize how much money we want to make from it. If that was our goal. We wouldn't do it this way. We would, we would frankly, we would propose to have large festivals. Attract twenty thousand people down here. We would be involved in trying to sell alcohol and make revenues those ways. That's not what we're doing here. We're trying to provide a family friendly concert series. You know, start off in that, you know, ten to twelve concert range and increase it over time, maybe upwards of twenty concerts. Um, so I want you to keep that in mind as we go through this agreement. Um, the other thing I want you to keep a couple of things is the reason we're bringing it tonight. It's not critical that it's voted on tonight. Like I said, if you want to table it, we can do that. But the reason we're bringing it tonight is, is Michael mentioned, we're out in the process of bidding Zumball Park now. Hopefully we'll get bids and we'll be able to move that project forward. That'll be a future decision for council. But the operator, uh, remember at his previous discussions with you, they typically like to start booking talent about a year out. And so that's the timeframe. We're getting into that timeframe now where they would start. Lining up talent so that when the theater opens, the amphitheater opens, the talent's ready to go on the show. So that's why we're bringing it to you now. A couple of things you remember back in December of last year. We brought to you a term sheet that's attached to your contract. There's a couple, there's a, uh, exhibit D and attachment to the term sheets attachment to. Exhibit D are the performance, it's sort of the. The operating cost that the operator proposes for each event based approximately, it's just an estimate. Based on the number of attendees. So those two documents together gives you a lot of information, financial information about what the expenses are, what the revenues might be. The term sheet shows it estimated what the revenue to the city might be for parking and, and some other things. So that's all part of this contract, uh, to give us some sense and idea and direction. Another important thing to keep in mind is. When we build this, if council ultimately decides to move forward with the amphitheater, that'll be a future meeting. Uh, and this contract speculates on that. It says, listen, it, it. It acknowledges that the city may decide not to build the amphitheater, right? So that's already covered in the contract, but if council decides to move forward with the amphitheater. It's going to take us probably at least two to three years. To establish this as a venue. That doesn't mean we won't have successful concerts in the interim. What it means is. That the performers, they, they don't like to go to. New theaters that have no, there's no, uh, history behind them. You know, if we were a casino building a very large theater, for example. That might be different, but we're, we're relatively. Small to mid-sized city, building a brand new theater space. We're not in the theater business. We haven't been doing it for years. Which is why we need to have an operator that knows what they're doing to run it. The operator that we have a term sheet with has a lot of success, putting on really great shows and has relationships. With many of the bands. That's very important for us because. We're going to be booking bands to our new amphitheater largely based on their credibility. Bands will want to come here. Because they have a relationship with that operator. Now, there's other operators as well. I'm just saying, when you're starting off with the new amphitheater, you have to establish it, just like we rate anything we go to hotels, concerts. So do the bands. The bands will rate us on whether or not that's a venue that they want to go to. The other thing I want you to keep in mind is. It, the contract is for a three-year term and then it has two, three-year options. The three-year term is to get this thing established. So what you see in the terms today are not necessarily what the terms would be going forward in the future. You certainly could change the terms if the, if the operator is amenable to those changes. But I want to remind you kind of where we're at today and how we got here. We introduced a, a term sheet which council basically accepted. Those are the business terms and then we built a contract around those terms. So pretty much everything you see in the contract is consistent with that term sheet. But you see more color now. You see more details. You see more le- language. So I certainly would expect tonight. Whenever the time is that you're going to choose to vote on this, to have questions about the language. So a lot of those questions are going to be directed to Mario. Some of them to Jason and I. But what does this mean and how, why did you set it up this way? That's what I would expect. Not as much in terms of, well, I don't like this term. We should change this term. We certainly can do that. It's council's prerogative. I just want to remind you, we adopted a term sheet back in December. As part of this process. All right. So those are the things I wanted to remind you of high level. Uh, this can be very interactive. Jason's going to walk you through the high level terms. Mario is going to be here as well to add color to this. Todd Spielman from Spade Entertainment is online, so he will be jumping in as well. A lot of your questions, if I would, if, if I could ask you, when you have questions, if you could direct them. So Mr. Spielman, can you answer this question or Mark or Jason or Mario? That way we all know, but. More than likely, we'll be jumping in to kind of sharing the responsibility here. So Jason, if you'd go.
Thank you, Mark. Madam Mayor, Council. Um, as Mark mentioned. Um, on December sixth, twenty twenty two, city council heard a presentation from Spade Entertainment. And approved a term sheet and directed staff to move forward with a management agreement. With Spade Entertainment. That's what we have before us tonight. Um, some highlights as Mark mentioned of, of the management agreement. It's a three-year agreement with a three-year option. The operator, uh, will schedule fifteen events the first year and more events in subsequent years. The city will pay the operator a hundred thousand dollars for the first year and seventy five thousand dollars in subsequent years for all aspects of marketing. And management of the venue. The city will be responsible for security deposits of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each year of the agreement for the ability to book talent. In turn, the operator would reimburse the city one hundred percent of the booking fees within thirty days of each event. The operator will handle all aspects of food and beverage at the venue. The operator will have commercial general liability insurance, insurance naming the city of Tulare as additionally insured. The city will receive one dollar for every ticket sold and we will be responsible for collecting all parking revenue fees. The city was received twenty percent of all sponsorship revenue collected after cost. The city will collect one thousand dollars for every private party rental that comes from the operator. Obviously, in this management agreement, there's other, uh, terms as well, but these are the key terms of, of this management agreement. And with that, um, I'm open to any questions. Todd Spielman is also live with us and as Mark mentioned, uh, city attorney Mario is, is also available for questions. So this time I'd like to turn it over to council for any questions.
Have event, uh, questions?
Yeah.
For public comment. Is there anyone here that wants to get public comment? Seeing none. Any questions by the council?
Sure. Um, sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm tired and didn't have time or give questions to staff ahead of time. But if I'm understanding this right, in the agreement, the, the timeframe of payment, so it specifically speaks to. The city would pay the operator a hundred thousand dollars for the first year of the agreement. So does that define of the term of this agreement is upon execution? So as, I guess what I'm getting at is per se, if we're looking at still a three-year can, can. Two-year construction or what does that look like if we sign this? And I'm not. And my understanding is it, it's signing an agreement if we execute and the fees due today because the contractor has work to do, but. The term of payment. So as we sign this in and do that, is that start the clock of the term of payment?
I, I think I'll do is turn most of the questions related to the contract language to Mario first, and then I'll also give my thoughts if. Maybe I misconveyed something to Mario.
No, I think, um, how we constructed it was, it was, um, not immediate. It was, there, there's a, I'm looking for the language, but essentially there's a trigger point. Uh, with the council's going forward to move and, and do the reconstruction. Um, then there's the deadlines fall over that. It's not an immediate, immediate payment.
That was unclear to me as to when these payment. I mean, it does, where it talks about, I don't mean to take away from what you've indicated. Uh, Patrick, but where it talks about the hundred thousand and the seventy five thousand, I don't think it makes, he, he's absolutely right. I don't think it makes clear. When those payments are to be made. Am, am I wrong?
I know you referred to the city attorney. Steve leaned in and what he had said to me was he thought there was language that says once a certificate of occupancy is.
Correct. That's in the term. So that's on page, uh, four, four. Uh, it might be one, two. It's, it says page four on the bottom. It's actually page, it's the third page, uh, section three term. And it's the last couple of sentences of that first paragraph.
Okay.
Okay.
The payment happens with the term, but the term doesn't start until the date issuance of certificate of occupancy of the completed amphitheater.
Correct.
Okay. But I think, I think, uh, just to follow up on that, that's the payment to the operator, but the, uh, release of the security deposit. Has to happen sooner because what I heard was. He needs a year or so ahead of time to book Ice Cube or whoever, Garth Brooks, or whoever's going to come out to our amphitheater ahead of time. To with that deposit. So that would be, that would be funding immediately available as to when the operator.
To, with that deposit. So that would be, that would be funding immediately available as to when the operator. Begins that process. Is that correct? Or is that part of that agreement as well?
Yes, but also in conjunction, I'll, I'll find the language if you, if you give me a minute, but it's related to. The city determining that it wants to go forward and actually renovate the amphitheater because it can't, none of this can happen without.
So then there's another trigger for that.
Yes.
That's the contingent term on page five. Okay, but I guess the question I had, if we're still talking about the operation of funds and honor of Jason, uh, or, or someone else. What is that breakdown? It's a hundred thousand dollars for management and public relations or PR, correct? Is there, uh, is there any, um. Breakdown half, half fifty, fifty, eighty, twenty, what's, what's the? And, and when we talk about management, is that to be able to run the operations? What's, what's, how was that breakdown? So one hundred thousand, the initial one hundred.
That's a fee.
So it's, but it's, it says here's for PR and management, so.
Yeah, it does it, you're, so these are all great questions you're asking and they're questions that don't have a tremendous amount of specificity in, in each case, some, some more than others. Are my perspective of it at least is that the hundred thousand dollars is largely intended for their marketing and promoting of. This venue in, in every means that that means, right? So, uh, for example, if you go back and look at the term sheet, it talks about that a little bit more as well. Uh, so it says, it says, um. If you go back on the term sheet on page forty-three. It talks, all marketing and management funds will be used for marketing purposes, including newsprint, social media, venue promotion, digital media, radio, television, billboard campaigns. Interviewing talent, talent magazines. The marketing radius will be from Bakersfield, number said is estimated will take three to five years. Portion of the marketing and management funds will be used for production equipment at the venue. Less than, less than ten percent of marketing fees will be used for administrative costs. The city may recommend, you know, demand records to substantiate any amounts. Um, you operate may not utilize outside companies, may not utilize outside companies partially or wholly owned by the operator. So there's a little bit more color on somebody's things.
But is that part, is that, is that part of the agreement? Is attachment to part of the agreement, Mario? Yes, it is, okay. So in, so in regards, so from where I'm reading this, only ten percent of the hundred thousand could be used for administrative costs.
That's my understanding.
And then, so then I'm clear in the, uh, performers exhibit, exhibit D. There would be additional costs for additional, um. Our, uh, PR, digital marketing. Uh, what is it? Uh, radio marketing, digital media. Uh, so that, uh, wouldn't be an additional expense?
Not to us, but an additional expense to the operator for his concerts, right? So when you look at those performers and, and Todd, if I say something that's wrong, you need to chime in here. But when you look at exhibit D, he's giving examples of what, okay, here's the performer if he has fifteen hundred people. Here's a performer if he has. Twenty-five hundred people and here's a performer if he has thirty-five hundred, right? Those are just, they're just estimates. They're not. Hard fixed guarantees, but he's going to have to start promoting the venue. Outside of each of the shows in it, in advance of the shows, right? He's doing radio advertisement. He's trying to get, you know, producers of shows interested. So there are some of those costs that come out of the hundred thousand. Then there's also costs for each show that he's going to have to do. Some of those costs will come out of the show itself. And some of those costs may come from the hundred thousand dollars. We've not tied it down really restrictive. Because we're trying to allow him to have some flexibility as the expert in doing this and how he's going to use those funds. As long as they're going to be used for the purposes identified in the contract.
So I guess the, the question I had for Mr. Spielman then of the expenses that are in. I call them scenarios, but I guess the performance in terms of the different scenarios. For those particular expenses like digital, uh, digital media, radio marketing, uh. Are those companies that would, you would contract out with or are those things that your company would do in-house? And you're basically billing yourself. Is that, how would that scenario work?
Yeah, uh, thank you and nice to see everyone. Am I unmuted now?
Well, still, I can't hear you.
Still muted.
I'm not on mute on this end.
We're, uh, having trouble hearing you on that.
Are you muted on your end, Todd?
No.
I don't see the little mute button. So the, so that, that, that would be the question is, is for Mr. Spielman as the operator, uh, there are expenses, of course, to promote. Through digital media and all that. I'm just trying to understand how. Um, how that, i- is it a third-party? Uh, company or is that something your company does and you bill it as an expense for your company? Just trying to understand how, how that works.
I'm going to try to call in.
Oh, he's going to call in. You're going to call in, okay. I guess, um, while we wait for him to chime in, uh, I want to go back to. My, my one issue that I've brought up constantly since I heard about this contract is the one dollar for every ticket. Um, I like to see who on staff could sort of explain to me why that is, uh. A good thing for us as a city when in the performer. Um, we see, you know, a number of tickets sold at different prices from a hundred dollars to fifty dollars of. You know, twenty-five dollars maybe. Why, why do we come up with the dollar per ticket?
Sure, I'll be happy to explain that. And that really comes more from my experience. Uh, as you know, this will be the third. Concert venue that I've been involved in creating and working with operators on. Uh, it largely goes back to my opening statement about the need to establish the venue. Not only are we. Well, one, this is not intended to be profit-driven for the city. We want to cover our expenses and we make a little money. That's great. But we, we want to make sure that the operator is successful and certainly it's for the life of the contract, but. In the first few years, as we're trying to establish this venue, there's no way to know. Upfront, really how successful the venue is going to be from every perspective. Right? What is the market? Who are the performers are going to be here? What is, what? How are the consumers going to react to the, the product? So we're trying to be reasonable in approaching the dollar, uh, per ticket route. Rather than increasing it about. I can, I can give you an example. I know of a, a concert venue. That decided to triple that amount and it practically killed their shows. And so my concern is. The, the dollar per ticket is sort of a placeholder. Uh, for now, in the first few years, you'll see that there's other revenue streams that are available to us. One of them, for example, is the naming rights. The city would get one hundred percent of whether the naming rights dollar amount is. Council hasn't, we haven't had a lot of discussion about naming rights about, you know, do you want us to pursue that or not and, and what are the parameters around that? I can give you an example in Rockland, naming rights was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was what the value was of that naming right. I don't know what it'll be here.
Can I interject? I, I don't, I don't think the agreement, there's some things. First of all, by and large, I think the concept of the agreement, and I discussed that with Mr. Sagala today. I think the concept of the agreement is, is right on with what we're looking at. It just needs some tweaks.
Yes, I don't disagree.
And we might need to table this for that purpose. But, uh, for instance, on the city retaining the naming rights in, in attachment to. It indicates that the city retains the naming rights to the amphitheater, but on page thirteen. It talks about, and the city will work. Cooperatively with Spade in determining the appropriate level of compensation for said name.
Yeah.
I, that's inconsistent to me and I don't know why we would give any naming, any compensation for the naming rights. If we have somebody local.
Yeah.
Who is going to do that.
That's not what that, that, that's, that's not what that intends. So that maybe. Sure.
I could see something different if, let, let's say, and that's what he and I discussed, uh, this afternoon. Before we started, uh, we're still talking. Is that right? Okay, good. This afternoon, uh, was the fact that. You know, if we find somebody local who wants to name it. You know, we're going to keep all of it. If, if, uh, Mr. Spielman says, you know, I can find somebody. Who, who will pay twice that. And I can understand then we would have, uh, finder's fee of some sort.
Yep.
So I don't know. So I would imagine this could be adjusted to be able to make that clear. That, uh, except for some other arrangement that, that would be the case. And there's several little things like that that I think just seems.
Hundred percent in agreement, just so you know. And he will tell you this on the phone, so he, he, we have no problem changing the language, but. He will. Spade Entertainment will get nothing, zero dollars. For naming rights. That's not what that language means. That language is intended to say that we will work cooperatively with them to try to figure out what is the actual that. What Todd doesn't want to see happen is the city saying sell the naming rights for fifty thousand dollars when the city could get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, the language.
Yeah, that, that is vague.
Yeah.
Under the circumstances. The other thing I asked from a compensation standpoint and, and I agree to the one dollar. And Mario, you can answer this. You know, we've got cannabis in town now and we're charging that. That, a user's tax of, uh, five percent. I, I know, for instance, on a much bigger scale, scale, Las Vegas is trying to build a, uh, baseball stadium. And they're having some type of tax for, for people who come to, to hotels, come to, uh, the events. Right on the line. Uh, would we be able to tax and how would that affect you, Todd? Would we be able to tax ticks, ticket sales five percent? Without going to, uh. An election?
You know, I don't know. I, I don't know where tickets would fall into that, um, in, into your general retail sales. Uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, one of the things I, I would say though is, um. In, in drafting this agreement, kind of a, I, I wanted to add this, and it's not really germane to what you asked, but. In drafting this, we, we really, um, I looked at it from a standpoint of not trying to make a profit, right? It was really, um, in, in making the decisions on, on how to draft it. It's really how to make this event successful and drive people downtown to have the secondary effects. And so there were many decisions, uh, I think we went through. Because to, to me and the council's comments and Mark's comments, that wasn't the focus of how do we make a profit on this particular thing? It was more of how do we make the event successful because we hope to have these secondary effects from that. Um, so you may go through it and you may see things like that and, and that's why.
Right. And, and I just wanted to clarify for me, you know, I did talk to Dennis and I had a good conversation earlier about this. For me, it's not, I agree, it's not about making profits, but it's about being fair. And for me, it's about being, having a fair contract, a dollar, a dollar ticket doesn't make sense. I mean, in, in the performance, if you add up, uh. If we have a successful, you know, fifteen hundred attendee event. Um, the, the ticket sales has laid out here about sixty-five thousand dollars. And we get fifteen hundred. And then what a curve ball was thrown in me, at, at me was that now a nonprofit has been also put up there to get fifteen hundred dollars. That has never, as far as I understand, been a discussion about this contract and this. Operation. So now we have a nonprofit that's also getting the same amount of in-ticket sales as a city. Plus they're getting twenty percent cut of a bar, bar proceeds from selling alcohol. Which I don't have any problem as well, so at an, an event. So I mean, my question is where did this nonprofit come from? You know, how is it going to be selected? I, you know, one of the things that I talked to Dennis about earlier is I'd like for it, if we are going to go in that direction, if this is going to be part of that contract. We rotate the nonprofits. To allow them to get, earn a little bit of money for their nonprofits and not just pick the same one for fifteen consecutive events. So I think for me, the big question is where did the language or where did the expense of a nonprofit? Where was that added to this whole mix?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of questions that have been asked. I certainly can answer just about all of them, but I know we, Todd, is he on the line now?
Yeah, I, can you guys hear me?
Uh, can you go back first to answer Councilmember Sagala's original questions and then we can come back into the nonprofits after that?
Yeah, I think if we go back to, uh, and nice to see everybody. I wish I could be there in person. We have a huge music festival next week. So we're slammed up here. But I, uh, wanted to address the operator fee, the hundred thousand and then in following years of seventy-five thousand. So one of the things as Mark mentioned, uh, that's really important is, um. Building the credibility of the venue, uh, in the media and also, um. With record labels and artists throughout the country. Um, my job down there starts as soon as you guys. Say we're going with this amphitheater. Uh, I, I already feel a little bit behind, everyone knows, but that's okay. I, 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 I've been in worse situations. Um, we should be doing marketing, you know, probably by the end of summer to advertise the venue and get people excited about it. Uh, we already have relationships with iHeart Media, um, in Fresno and in Bakersfield. And they are excited about the project. Uh, locally for the digital advertising, you brought that up specifically. Uh, we are looking for local companies for that. And if they have experience in the social media platforms with, uh, entertainment, uh, we are. We want to spend our money locally down there with local operators. Um.
There's a delay. Real quick, so on, on that, and I appreciate that. And I know you and I talked about that when you were here. In December about hiring local folks and doing as much as you could. If, and I know that's a very special type of, of, uh. Business, the digital marketing as you laid out, uh, I mean. So I think my, what I want to know is if you can't find that locally, does that default to some, to some operation that you run?
Uh, it'll, I, I mean, the platforms and the companies that I use now aren't even necessarily local to Sacramento. They're, one of the companies that I use is out of the Bay Area. Um, but again, that's typically for the larger festivals that we do. I'm pretty confident we can find somebody local, but it could go outside of. The immediate area, it could go into Bakersfield or Fresno. We just have to evaluate that a- as we move closer. I've talked to, uh, Connie Diaz, uh, 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 quite a bit over the past few months down there. And, um, she has agreed to, uh, work with us. And, um, if we retain her services on many of these aspects, including sponsorship.
Okay, so, uh, and I think one of the things that going back, and I appreciate the answers to that. I think one of the things that we're looking at. Um, going back to the, the dollar ticket, uh, situation is. You know, the, the idea is, is to, to be fair, you know, because I think the one thing that I saw in the contract was, you know, there are some. Expenses the city will take on, right? In terms of, uh, the police service and all that. And I think the goal is to not. Try to lose money as well. And, and, and in those, in that particular, um, aspect is covered by the city in, in the agreement, correct? That any. Security outside of the venue or police services would be a cost of city incorporates, correct?
Yes, so right now, uh, the city would typically, the city be responsible for the costs associated with police officers. Todd's going to, Spade Entertainment would be responsible for security personnel. So he'll have. All kinds of personnel out there and he'll have a lot of security people at all the checkpoints, so on and so forth. The way we envisioned it, I've talked to Fred about this, but you know, I don't know that we've landed on a final number yet, but. I think my understanding is we would typically have two police officers at each concert event. There could be some that are larger that could require more officers. I think Todd's, I hate to speak for him, but I've, I've been in this. Negotiation situation several times now. Operators are typically concerned about a couple of things. The city have, the, 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 the operator coming in with an event. And then the city saying, okay, you're going to now have to have eight police officers and you have to pay all their overtime and everything for them. And it's like, well, wait a minute, how, how did we go from, we just need to have two to eight now? So that's one of the concerns. So in this initial three-year term. We said, okay, we would pay for the police officers. He'll pay for all other security personnel. That's where we sit today. You know, subject to discussion, but that's, that's kind of how we ended up there. Uh, if, if we have an event that requires more police officers, you know, Fred and I would have that conversation of whether or not that is. Absolutely necessary or not, whether Todd can make it up by having more security personnel. There's a sort of a metric. Between how many people you have and how many onsite security personnel you would need to have. Our goal would be to have Todd have to bring more people on. And not have to carry that burden on the taxpayers.
Yeah, if, if I could comment on that. Um, and, and Mark's, uh, right. So the, the thing about having, uh, uniformed police officers on site. It's there as a show of. It's there as a show of force, uh, my security usually handles all situations. I can think of maybe two situations in the past five years where police had to step in. It's very rare, they're, they're mainly as a show of force. I have a music festival next week and I have three police officers, uh, for, you know, thousands of people. Um, I have another one in September, that's much larger, it's fifteen thousand people a day. And I'll have ten officers there, you know, we don't have to worry about that size down there. Uh, so it's more of a show of force, but I don't want to speak for the police chief down there, but that's. Uh, from my, um, aspect of things and my experience is when the city hires the police. They have a lot more pull than us getting, you know, into the mix and, um. Them wanting to put more officers there than needed.
And, and can you answer the nonprofit, who, how did the nonprofit pop up?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to answer the nonprofit, so, uh, the way that. With ABC, who is the Alcohol Board of Control, um, a nonprofit has to be involved. In a bar situation at these events. And what I mean by that is, uh, typically what happens, I'll give you an example for next week for our festival. We have Women's Veterans Association, they are doing all of our bar work. That includes, they purchase the alcohol, they purchase supplies. Uh, they do all of that, as a producer of concerts, I cannot purchase, pre-purchase any alcohol. It is illegal, uh, with ABC. It doesn't mean that, that the nonprofit is stuck with that bill, they are reimbursed after the fact, after the bar is ran. And the totals for the night are ran, and then usually we cover those expenses. And then we give them an additional twenty percent of the bar because typically they have volunteers that run the bar. So I always have to have a nonprofit involved. I typically like to keep the same nonprofit, I don't mind mixing it up a little bit. The biggest key is, is that with a nonprofit doing the bar, they have to have the funds to purchase the alcohol. And be out that money for a couple of weeks, um, after an event. And some nonprofits just don't have that. Um, I do have options with my nonprofits in Sacramento. That can purchase the alcohol down there because they want to get in on the media down there. Um, and then we can like find a nonprofit down there and, and split the difference. And I don't mind paying for staff to run the bar, I, I can do that legally. Um, but I have to have a nonprofit involved on some level buying the alcohol and, and most of the supplies.
Todd, one other, one other point is, I, I think, what I think I've heard in the past from you is. You, one of the reasons you also like us, the same group or a limited number of nonprofits. Is because they're trained, they understand what to look for, you know, because they're serving alcohol, right? How to ID, all the things that are involved in the selling of alcohol, and then the, the third comment is. Uh, it's a way that you actually get to give back to the community as well, right? So it's not just all about you making money, it's about getting others involved and they get a piece of, of the action, so to speak.
That's correct, and you know, I'll just give another, for instance, next week, uh, the Women's FFW. Um, ten out of eighteen of the volunteers that will be there are certified in all bar training and what to look out for. And, and keeping an eye on things, the ABC likes that, police likes that, fire likes that, that they're all certified. So we do look for that, it's not necessarily necessary, but it's, it's a big plus. Um, the other thing I, I should note on nonprofits is, you know, doing these events is all about giving back on some level. It doesn't have to be a nonprofit involved to run the bar. If we want to take care of a nonprofit to interact with the crowds, uh, any of that stuff, we will set them up. Um, a, another example for next week, we'll, we'll have three nonprofits onsite besides the bar nonprofit. And those three nonprofits, we're giving space to, we're setting them up with tents, tables, chairs and everything. And ideas on how to interact with the crowd, we're giving them, uh, little shot skis to give out to people and things like that. And that helps them build databases and interact with the public.
I do know that, uh, as far as serving alcohol that, uh, or, or cert, a nonprofit being involved, it, it's somewhat similar. To the fact that, uh, the high school district has concessions. And they have the same organization all the time because they know what they're doing, uh, Kuanis does that.
Yep.
And Kuanis does know what they do, what they're doing.
We do.
They do know what they're doing, and I know at the, at the internet, uh, at World Ag Expo, they have the same nonprofit serving alcohol at that facility. Tulare County Fair does the same thing, and the whole purpose is to have consistency. You can't just bring anybody in and say, okay, serve beer, they have to know what they're doing. And, uh, we didn't get a chance to discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I, I'd feel comfortable if there was, I know that, uh, I've gone to events in the city and there's different nonprofits. I mean, there's not every single nonprofit, but I think I just like, I feel comfortable if there was the ability to offer it to a few. If they're willing to train, if they're willing to put up the money, if they're willing to do that, that there would be a couple of options you would have locally. Uh, versus one being all the time, and I, and I appreciate that they, there's training and there's consistency, but. If there's a couple that you would be open to, they're willing to do it. Obviously, you set the, you set the standards and the parameters you need. And if they're willing to fill them, then there might be a rotational, sort of a rotation that you can do in the future. And that's, that's kind of something I hope you would consider, uh, as part of this contract.
Yeah, uh, one hundred percent, and it, you know, I just want to just point out real quick too is. Some of the worst complaints that, um, a music festival or a concert can get are bars that are not ran properly. And, uh, so that's, you know, very important, and it, the training is, is pretty easy. Uh, and so if we, if council comes to us with some ideas for various nonprofits. I am more than happy to talk to them, I would prefer to have someone local that's excited, that's all about it. And we can guide them and make them some money and have some fun doing it.
I think we kind of took over with questions along the same line when Mr. Issuewood was talking. I don't know that he was finished, I apologize.
Would you like me to address the dollar per ticket?
Well, I think one of the things, yes, but one of the things I was wondering, and we had somewhat of a condition, a, a conversation was. Uh, the, the aspect of, uh, some type of user tax or sales, uh, additional tax that can be imposed. That wouldn't necessarily come out of your pocket, but, uh, it would be charged at the time of purchase. And the other is the possibility of, uh, a percentage fee on each sold as opposed to, uh, a flat dollar, you know, like. Five percent or something, somewhere in that, what, what is the normal ticket go for?
So it, it really varies, if you look at the performance, uh, before you, you know, you, you see some of the ticket prices there. And when we're starting out a new venue like this, we really are going to have to gauge, you know, what the public can take. Uh, uh, you know, in Sacramento, for instance, there are so many venues, there are so many music festivals. And we know how to price according to what other people are pricing. But sometimes, you know, going into a, a, a smaller area is, we're really just gonna have to gauge it the first year. The, the thing that we have to be careful of, and I think I brought this up at the council meeting, uh, last time, is. I'm, I'm sure everybody's aware of the debacle Ticketmaster's in right now with, with charges and, and things like that. The concert that we're doing next week is free parking and no ticket fees, we're, we're charging a flat rate. And the venue that we are using is a dollar per ticket and fifty cents of that ticket they're giving back to a nonprofit. And that's pretty typical around here in Sacramento. I have to be really careful on the marketing of these shows down there. I haven't decided yet if I'm, they do no ticket fees. It's, it's a possibility and I'm always open to discussion on that. When we get large artists down there and fill the five thousand seats, I have no problem with ticket fees. But if we're doing a battle of a band show, you know, we're charging twenty bucks and there's no ticket fees. Um, because they're still gonna pay for parking, they're still gonna want to buy a beer or two. So I would just really encourage council to consider the dollar per ticket. I'm totally open to discussing it after the first year. If council really wants a little bit more, I would be more apt to go into the VIP ticket area and off, and. You know, talk about a little bit more, but keep in mind, in VIP, I also have a lot more expense. Uh, we have, you know, meals that we feed VIP, so, you know, dinner and a free drink and, and all that. And that can be helped if we find a good caterer that's willing to do a really good deal and, and, you know. Cut pricing a little bit and trade for some, um, services.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, like on a twenty dollar ticket, a one dollar fee is five percent. So I, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of where my mind was working was that we could be in a situation to where it's five percent on all tickets or so, somewhere. That way, if, if it's a greater amount, then it's, uh, um, it's five percent no matter what, I. But I, those are things that are subject to discussion because there's, there's a variety of things I had here that I just made notes of. As we went, uh, through this. Um. You know, the ability to, uh, rent a third party, third parties, you know, exactly how that would work as far as, uh. Uh, under the circumstances, I guess that, uh, we, the city would have to take a look at, at, uh. Any agreement as it related to that, but how would that work? I mean, you're taking the.
Yeah.
When we say the, the venue, the exhibit on the agreement was all of Zumwalt Park. So in essence, when you sublet this, we're, you're in effect taking over the whole park at that time and. Uh, with somebody else in charge and you're, you're not in, involved. Get, can you give me an idea of how that's supposed to work?
Yeah, one of the things that I'm really careful of is if somebody is renting the venue out. It's important to me that the staffing stays consistent and that would be our staffing. And the reason is, is because you just, you never know what you're gonna get, right? Um, but when, uh, somebody comes to us to rent, um, a venue, whether it's for a concert. Or whether it's for a corporate, you know, retreat. Uh, we take down everything that they need, so if it's a concert, do you want us to do, you, you know, the sound and lights? Uh, you know, we have some people that just want us to do everything but hire the band. Uh, that sometimes they even want us to buy all the green room stuff, you know, for them. So I really look at that and just, you know. Estimate my expenses on that, um, but we stay consistent with staffing. I'm more apt to stay, uh, consistent with us doing sound and lights, but there are gonna be situations. Uh, where like Euler, you know, wants to, you know, rent the space for shows. And that's great, he can, you know, uh, he does this, you know, he's experienced, so. I'm still gonna have staff on site and we're still gonna make sure that everything stays great, but he can do sound and lights and he can run the ticket office and that's all great. Um, so that's really, you know, the rentals are, are great and they will happen. Uh, but every single one's gonna be completely different, and I think it's just a matter of working with Jason, you know, when those things come up.
And, and a, along those lines, in regards to the, to the third-party rentals, um. Is the council going to set a fee schedule for the park or is it open? Uh, is it, what's the word, fair market? In other words, right now, we want to rent an harbor, we want to rent a park, we want to rent the community center. There's a fee associated with that, so would that be something this council would set? Or would it be open-ended? So if someone, for example, to, for, for Mr. Spielman to, to rent the amphitheater. To a third party, the fee would be five thousand set by the city, or I'm just throwing a number out there, but five thousand for the city. Or is it open-ended where he can, someone wants to pay him twenty five thousand to use it, that's the price? Is there gonna be any set schedule that we set, um, as a city?
Uh, I'll, I'll try to answer that. Uh, I think our perspective is for city-related events, we'll have a fee schedule. We weren't anticipating setting a, a, a fee schedule for Todd, that would be up to him to set. Because the contract also says that he has first opportunity to put on an event for someone, and if they're not able to come to terms, he's not. He's not willing to do the event for them for whatever that reason may be. Then they could always come to the city and the city could choose to put on the event on our fee schedule, so we weren't trying to impose a schedule on him. Does that sound correct, Jason and Todd? Do you, you guys both?
Yeah, that is correct, so if, if the Segala family wanted to have a family reunion at Zumwalt Park, there was nothing scheduled, they would first contact Todd. Todd would say, hey, this is too small of an event, let's kick it back to the city and the city would charge the normal fees for a. For a Segala family reunion at Zumwalt Park, for example.
So I invited my cousins from Hanford and they all became a big event, then what would Todd charge? Would it be open-ended, whatever the market is, whatever he decides, I mean, what? What is it when it triggers that it's an event worth of his time? What is the fee going to be for the amphitheater? So I'm hearing it's fair market, whatever somebody wants to pay to use the venue. Is that?
And I, I, I think there's also a component that it goes to Spade for entertainment purposes. So i- in my interpretation, Segala Family Reunion is not an entertainment, it, it wouldn't be an entertainment event, right? So.
Well, I mean, they just, I mean, they just make it an entertainment event, I don't care if it's.
No, no, but that's the distinction, right? Is if you're trying to have an entertainment event, you're trying to bring in a band or some other entertainment, you would go through Spade. If you want to have family reunion or the high school wants to use it to put on a play, that isn't, that is not like on the for-profit, you know, we're trying to entertainment side.
No, I get that, that's, that's not the issue for me, it's an issue, it's an event that, that Todd and his company find acceptable. Saying, hey, this is great, and you're bringing, you know, steel as an ortho Euler, or you're bringing, uh, Ice Cube, which I'm hoping maybe one day, but you're bringing, uh, that kind of entertainment. It's worth my time, you know, uh, there is no, there is no schedule fee, so I can charge you a hundred thousand. To use the venue, I can charge you twenty thousand, I can charge you five hundred bucks, it's up to me to decide how much I'm gonna charge you. Versus us as a city saying, okay, we have an agreement where we would get a thousand dollars, right? From, uh, from a rental.
Correct.
Private event.
Private event, or, you know, or he, you know, his, his days, his days of the year, I guess that's what I would call it, when he. When, when Spade Entertainment has control of the venue outside of city events and so forth. Is it, is it the, would the city, should the city kind of set a, 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 a price there? Or is it open-ended, that's, and that's, I don't see that in the contract.
No, it's a, it's a, I mean, that is the agreement.
Right.
Right, we're, we're handing off the entertainment to him.
But I guess my question is that, is that something the council would be comfortable with? You know, so is that, is that something that we want to be able to say, well, you know, hey? You get someone to pay a million bucks and to do an event, hey, good, good luck to you, but do we want to be able to set that parameter? And that's a question that I would put on my colleagues, yeah, it's an agreement we're trying to hash out. But my question is that, is that something that should be, that's fair or should be addressed?
I, I think in responding to that as council, that was that, my approach, I think a bit with that is, is more, is kind of more of a liberal approach. That it's three years, it's first year, it kind of comes back to that, that baseline principle of working through it. I, I think I could think of examples that bring merit to that, that there are perhaps maybe certain cultural or certain ethnic events that don't drive the certain amounts. And how would we, how would we approach that knowing that maybe certain cultural, ethnic events didn't have. An equity component of being able to present in the community? But I think what we would have to do is, that's what this three years allows for. Among, amongst a lot of the discussions that we're having is to come back in three years and, and look at those issues as they happen. Um, being open-ended is what Mario had said, um, is something to work through, but I also. I, I think Mario has covered an important, which is the sanctity of the Tulare community is preserved here. That if you have a family function or you're having some sort of community function, we've mitigated, I think, that issue, so, um. I, I'm just saying, as. I I'm just saying, as I think as council member, it's it's a point. But I think that's what the three year parameters, we're going to have to walk through this and learn and and come back.
I mean, I mean, I think I just want to, you know, and I'll bring this up one more time, just kind of like, I want to understand the process by which a third party entertainment type of event would, how would, you know, what would they be made, I guess, or what would they be required to pay to to rent the venue? If it's free market, open ended, that's one thing. Or is it something that the council wants to say, hey, the max you can rent out an event for is $10,000 a night? You know, or, you know, do we, do we want to have entertain that kind of discussion? Because we're we're getting a thousand bucks whether he charges them 1,000 or whether he charges them 10,000, right? That's that's in the agreements, correct, Mario?
Yes, but that that situation would be covered under the the first refusal. I mean, that's kind of the whole, that's kind of the whole point. Is a third party for entertainment purposes, they would go to to spade and say, I would like to do this event. And if they can hammer out a deal, they hammer out a deal. And if they can't, then they come to the city and say, hey, we 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 couldn't do this deal. And then essentially, we charge them our our costs. I mean, our soft, our
Yeah, but but then who runs that, who runs that concert? Who runs that entertainment? The city now, is it Jason's staff now that has to run?
Yeah, it would be like how it is now, right? So if somebody wants to come and use Zoom.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I'm not talking about you know, Tipton Middle School Mariachi or typical, you know, you know, Western High School marching band. I'm not talking about that. Talking about an event of production. Big production. So big production wants to come to Tulare. They they see that the calendar is available. And and then, and then, I mean, the question, what I'm hearing is that the agreement allows Spade Entertainment to charge whatever that entertainment company wants to pay. Could be
What the market bears.
Yeah, so it's fair market. I use that word already. So the question is, I would be more comfortable if if if, for example, we come to find out that a concert came in, promote, an entertainer or whatever, they they paid $50,000 to use our the amphitheater. And we're only getting 1,000 bucks. That to me is not the fair issue. So there's, if there's some sort of step thousand between, you know, if you get someone paid that 10,000, you're going to pay from 11,000 to 20,000, it's 1,500. If you're going to pay from 20,000 to 30,000, it's 2,000. I think I would rather have that kind of approach than just being open ended. And that's the point I'm trying to make on on the agreement.
Yeah, and and I think council to decide. And again, it's not, the agreement is not drawn up like that in order to maximize this these profits. So if you guys want to do that.
I think we all have to recognize that basically what this agreement is, is an opportunity for each side to see how this works and and come to an understanding of whether it'll provide the economic development we're looking at and yet be profitable for for Mr. For Spade Entertainment and Mr. Spielman. And the and the reality is, we talk about a three year contract with a a three year right of first refusal. And Mario, that's not what this contract is. This contract can be terminated with 160 days notice and a $10,000 liquidated damage payment by either side. So so the reality is as much as we work with each other, as much as we want to make this work, if either side feels like this just isn't working, eat both sides can can make a move in that regard. And that's fair. You know, if we feel like we're not making the money that this council determines should be made, then we we can do something about it. If Mr. Spielman finds out, finds that this isn't working for him, then he can make a move in that regard. And termination doesn't necessarily mean a an end to the relationship. It can, it can be a renegotiation of the terms and conditions that maybe aren't necessarily
There's other companies that do this as well. I mean, we got Euler Torres here locally that does that as well. So I guess my point is that I just want to clarify on 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 page four of the, whoa, page, yeah, page, I guess.
I was just trying to put that in perspective.
Yeah, no, I, so the term says a three year agreement with two additional three years. Is it two or one? So we're talking potentially nine years, correct? Be read it potentially. So I think, I mean, for me, I know, I I know we talked about it's going to be a a relationship where we kind of, you know, feel each other out, figure out what's going on, how things work. So I mean, I don't mind supporting a three year agreement and maybe with another extension. But like to be able to revisit maybe in two years where we are on the economics. I mean, I would feel comfortable doing that, you know, because waiting for three years to find out that, you know, a dollar ticket, hey, was not as fair we can get with the city. I would, I'd be be open to that in terms of just the term itself.
But you don't have to wait three years. You have, you have to wait 180 days.
Well, that's if we want to terminate. I'm not saying we're going to terminate the agreement. But what I'm, what I'm saying is in two years, revisit the economics of it. Because we haven't even talked about the sponsorship. It's 80 20 split. You know, to me, what is the, what is, what is after expenses mean? You know, on that, there's other things in this agreement that I have some concerns on. For example, you know, I I want to make sure that it's clear that in in the agreement, there's a clause that says that Spade Entertainment and the city will retain the data that is collected from however emails or personal data. I want to put in there that says that that they're prohibited from selling it to a third party. I like to protect our city residents' identity by not having lists collected and then be sold to different folks. So I mean, those are examples of, there are other things in this contract that I like to to look at.
Good night.
Councilman Sagala, I think Todd wants to address a few of those questions.
Thank you. Just just backing up really quick to what we charge if somebody came in to rent the venue. There is a standard in the industry for a concert. If big time productions comes to us and says, we want you guys to do this. My first question is, how many tickets do you think you're going to sell to this event? What is it worth? If they say $2,500 or 2,500 tickets, the average price to operate, this is does not include production and things like that, is about $20,000. That includes paying staff, that that includes everything, insurance, everything. There's there's somewhat of a standard. If I said it's $50,000, they would laugh at my face and go somewhere else. So in the industry, there is a standard. We, I would prefer to do shows myself and 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 attempt to make the money that way. And you got to remember, half the shows we're not going to make money on. That's just standard. If we're doing 12 to 15 shows, we're not going to make money on half of them. It's just, that's just how this business works. You have winners and losers. We have to test the waters down there on what music is going to be great down there. What's going to attract, you know, ticket holders? As far as selling data, when we have people opt in, they're opting in that we do not share the data at at all. Nobody can touch our database. That's very well protected and only for our eyes and for our email marketing. And we don't even send out that much data. We do show announcements similar to Live Nation. We do a show announcement. And then we email people, like we sent an email today to the database for our concert next week, just giving them instruction and maps and things like that on where to park and and all that good stuff.
But I think on that point, I think on that point, then I think we we're in agreement that I would be comfortable, we put in a sentence, even the city attorney, that 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 data would not be sold to a third party.
Can I make a suggestion, perhaps since you had said there's these points and there's other points, and I think other council members have suggested that there might be some other edits? That there's a lot of verbal components going on here, could maybe recommend that that those be provided to staff like in some form of writing and that allows staff to respond and Mr. Spielman respond, that we come back to this later on the agenda. And I would like to see those questions in writing and staff can respond and Mr. Spielman respond, so we can kind of address those in an organized and I and I think a cognitive manner that here was the 12 items or here's corrections to the contract and let's have that standard so we can bring this back to another meeting. Because I think there's additional questions that are out there as well.
One thing we could do is, you know, I I looked at it from the standpoint of my day job. And maybe some some collaboration with Mario and also Mr. Spielman that a committee of two, even even though we squabble up here sometimes, I think Mr. Sagala and I might be able to go through some of these and try to hammer that out. If we came back, if we tabled this and came back in either the next meeting or the first meeting in August, would that create a problem, Mark?
Well, I have to defer to Todd. I would certainly shoot for July, preferably over August.
We only have one meeting in July.
That's true, because
And we have a holiday in between.
Yeah, so it would be the second meeting in July, or it would be this, well, it is typically the second meeting in July would be the meeting. Yeah. I think that's enough time.
I think that's a a good idea. I think we need to really capitalize on the expertise of Mr. Spielman and his Spielman and his company. He he knows exactly how this works. And so if you want some clarification in language, I think that, you know, he he knows exactly how this works. He's been doing it for 25 years. He knows how many people are going to come, what you get from tickets. I mean, so let's not you know, try to make things up for for him to do. Let's just look at his expertise. Mark has done this before. He's got expertise. I've never, you know, done a concert. Nobody here has ever done anything like this. So I don't feel like we have the expertise to tell him what to do. We need to maybe clarify language because you're a lawyer, you know how to clarify language. And let's get this done and get this thing out to bed and start building it. We could spend another month with all these little questions about it. And it's already almost 11 o'clock and I have to be at the airport at 5:00 in the morning in Fresno. I want to end this meeting. So can we decide to table this?
Yeah, I I did start this out by saying, Mr. Spielman, that I think that the essence of the agreement is fine. I I just feel like there's some things we need to work out. And some of that may just come in drafting more than anything else. And hopefully we can get right to work on it so that we can come for, that'd be the 18th of July, is that correct?
Yes.
Which will will come around pretty quick. So we'll try to see if we can get this back on the agenda on the 18th of July for purposes of having an agreement that a majority of the council can support.
Yeah, that's that's fine with me, council. One caveat, just so you know, my birthday is July 19th, so you have to have a birthday cake for me.
If you come, we'll have a birthday cake.
So just to be clear, then, council consensus is what Mr. Maderos had recommended?
In conjunction with Mr. Spielman.
I'll probably be there too.
All right, is that, are we coming consensus? Hallelujah. Okay, so future.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman.
Yes, thank you very
Thank you.
Your patience is admirable.
Thank you.
Okay. So any future agenda items have not been submitted, so they will not be on the agenda. Staff updates? Jason?
Nothing to report.
Tricia?
Nothing to report.
Michael?
Just a little extra information on the International Agro Center interchange construction end date, six to 25.
Thank you.
We'll see.
Diego?
Thank you for adopting the budget. Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
Tracy?
Nothing.
Mario?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Janice? Chief Bot? Chief England?
One thing, we're doing fireworks enforcement here in the next couple of days before the fourth. We won't have a meeting until then, so we're coupling up with the fire department and doing some enforcement. That's all we have.
Thank you.
Was a great vacation. Again, thanks to staff, council. Great to be home.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Missed you guys too.
Nothing from Mario then.
Okay, let's put our horses away.